Progress. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Syle Township Planning Commission meeting, July 11th, 2022. And I'll both get sign in for the Plaid of the Evidents. Thank you. All right, this evening, let's go ahead and do a roll call, and then we'll go ahead and Bob, if you would, do roll call, and then we'll officially appoint you as secretary.
Commissioner Moore.
President.
Commissioner Sharma.
President.
Commissioner Haide, present. Chairwoman Culberson.
Present. Then, before we adapt the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Commissioner Haide as our acting secretary this evening.
I'll move that.
All right, and is there support? Okay, supported by Commissioner Sharma. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. And Commissioner Moore is gonna be our timekeeper for the public hearings. So, next is the adaption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes anyone wants to propose for the agenda? Okay, approved by Commissioner Haide, support from Commissioner Sharma. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Then we're moving on to communications and correspondence. I just wanted to make people aware of, one piece of correspondence was in there as a notification for the community waste treatment for Heritage Woods. And I did forward it also to the Hiram River Worship Council. There's a person there who reviews those. And we, if we desire, we need to request a public hearing for that. And maybe in my report, we can kind of bring that up. And I just wanted to get people's thoughts on that. The other thing is I did email a series of links that will be helpful for our PUD discussion, talking about visualizing density and also, you know, sort of the concept of ego districts. So, anyone else want, is there any other communication anyone else would like to highlight or bring up that you've received? All right, I'm seeing them. We'll move on to public comment. And this evening, we do have two public hearings. So this public comment period would be for anything other than the public hearing on Crossroads or Ann Arbor Farms. So, if there are, is anyone here? Well, it's three minutes. If you'd like to make up to three minutes for public comment, if you represent a group, it's five minutes. And typically, we start with anyone in the room and then move to our online folks. So is there anyone in the room that would like to provide public comment not on the two items for a public hearing? Do we have anyone online?
So far, no one online yet. I'll give everybody a minute if you've got some comments that are not part of the public hearing. So here's your end.
All right, then we'll move on to our public hearings. And our first public hearing this evening is OAPUD number 22003, ESP number 22008, Crossroads rezoning from I-1 to PUD. And typically, the public hearings begin with a presentation by the applicant, and then the reports from our planning consultant and engineering consultant. And then we ask for any public comments. And then we have a brief discussion, and the same rules apply, three minutes for public comment for individuals, five minutes for an organization, and we start with folks in the room and move online. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing for Crossroads at 7:10.
Would you like us to go forward?
Yes, please. And if you could, if you're gonna speak, go ahead and sign in. There's a sign in sheet specifically for Crossroads. Yes.
What data have you on this for Crossroads?
Okay, Crossroads, if you click on the link, I don't have.
Twenty-seven of the package.
Okay, thanks, because I do it by.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, why don't you do that, and I can. There we go. Okay, I think that's the first one, right? Okay, I can't see the little numbers in my glasses. All right. So, yeah, team, do you want to just go ahead and introduce yourselves? And we're all here.
Well, I'm Dan Kellar. For those who don't know me, I'm the president of Urban Group Development Company, who is the developer of the Crossroads project. And I've been around this area for quite a while. I've been developing in Ann Arbor for over 30 years. I've been in the same office on Ashley Street for over 30 years also. And I've done a few, a number of projects in the area. A couple you may know are Ridgewood, which is if you cross Liberty going into town on the right-hand side, there's just fast state, and there's those boulder walls. That was one of the first projects I did in town. It's a really nice little project. It was built as like a French community. Anyway, it's a nice project. Get a chance to go through it, I think you'll enjoy it. Another one was 618 South Main, which is just south of downtown. An acre of land we assembled, and it's for young professionals. It was built, you were part of it seven years ago, I guess, eight?
I think it's 2013, something like that.
Shannon was the landscape architect for it. And amazingly enough, in this acre of land, which is mostly covered by a building, she was able to create a rain garden that catches all of the infiltration into the soils. So it goes right into the ground, doesn't go in the storm sewer system. The engineers at the time said it couldn't be done. Shannon said, oh, yeah, we could do that. So she did, and it's a wonderful, if you think of rain garden being small little areas, this is for a big building. It's 160 units, 120 parking spaces, and all the stormwater that comes off goes into that rain garden. A project I did before that, I was a partner in with 601 Forest, which is now called Landmark, 16-story project on the corner of Forest and Southview. So I'm just trying to give you an idea of some of the things I've been involved with. We're a small company. We only do one project at a time. We're sort of a boutique firm in that we pick things that we enjoy. We're trying to do a very creative, intelligent use of the development of the property and fit within the community well. So I'd like to introduce the three members of the people that are here today. Joe Mader, who's a civil engineer, Washington engineer. Shannon Giarado, who I mentioned before, insight designer, she's a landscape architect. Rob Merle is a project architect. It's OX Studio. And each of these people will present information tonight. Now, we've been together as a team for almost three years, we're sorry to say, because we took an office project on the same property through the approval process. And it was during COVID, as you all know, it was a difficult time in many, many ways for all of us. But by the time we got the office project done, the office market had just shuttered. And where a 4% vacancy rate was at the time, by the time we were through, there's close to 2 million square feet in Ann Arbor area available of traditional office space. So the project, even though we went to full approval with Syle Township, we went through planning, we went through township board, we did all the engineering, we did the architecture, we did everything, spent a lot of money and time on it, it became valueless. So we worked with the township when you were doing your master plan, so that this property could be multifamily, and we submitted for multifamily. And this is where we are now. We created a project, which is, we think, a very, very nice project. And I want to just give you some basic idea, information on it. This is built, could you show the first image? Is that possible? So in the center of this is what we're calling the commons. And we were talking, I thought it was a little more than a half an acre. Joe now tells me it's close to an acre in the center of this, and the community is built around it. And underneath that is the infiltration beds, but it's deep down. The soils on this are wonderful. There's sand, it infiltrates beautifully. It'll take much more than hundreds of years of storm. Everything will be, all the stormwater will be caught on site. Our development is focused sustainability, stormwater filtration, rain gardens, and creative use of land and naturalized plantings, and having as much open space as we can. There's a dynamic tension between creating common open space, walkways, sustainability aspect, and density. There's a phrase I've been looking at, it says more units or apartments does not necessarily mean more density. Half of this, almost half of this 10-acre site is open space. That's not dense. Right? There's a number of apartments on it, but it doesn't create the density that people worry about where everyone's crowded in and all you have is asphalt. We have a lot of green space on this. There are three building types with this, and I'll try to walk you through it. And Rob, the architect, will go through it in some detail. On the right-hand side, which is the south side of the property, those are townhome units. They're between 1,400 square feet and 1,800 square feet. They have sloping roofs, they're great setup for solar, and they are south-facing. The ones in the center, we call it garden court units. Those three, and then the two on the Liberty. And those are real interesting architecturally. Rob will go through those with you. But there's a repetition to it. There's 16 units in every block of that. And there are one bedrooms on the inside and two bedrooms on the outside. And then the larger buildings are called podiums, and those are parallel to Wagner and parallel to Liberty. And they're sort of, if you go up Wagner, you'll see that they're tucked down into the hillside. One of the things, we did our layout on these before we got our market study back. And that was very interesting, because what we have, what we're going to change it to is we have a lot more smaller units, about 600 square foot, one-bedroom units. It's different than what was presented on to the preliminary plan. The final plan will be a little bit different, and that will address some of the issues that we were worried about before. But 41% of the units will be one-bedroom, one-bath, 46% two-bedroom, two-bath. And then 7.5% of the townhomes are 16-townhome units. And then we have 5.5% of the penthouse-style residents, which are in the podium buildings. Now, the reason we're doing this is because in our market demand, 68% of the people who buy here, again, this is all done through this analysis, which is very interesting, which I'm glad to share with you, are millennials. They'll do the one-bedrooms, smaller one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, younger people. Then the others is traditional and non-traditional families will lease 21% of this. So we have townhomes, we have two-bedrooms, three-bedroom units. And then empty nesters, which is getting to be my age, of course, and retirees are 11% of our market. What we've done with this then is we have a broad spectrum. We pretty much touch on most of the market in the community, from young millennials to families to retirees. So we have a place for every one of them. There's not a separation. And they can all share in the common areas that we have, of course. One other thing I thought you might be interested in is the absorption or the leasing of these rental units. It's projected that 50% of them will be leased in one year, and within 24 months, it'll be fully leased. So it's a project that hits the market well, hits the demographics well, and hits the demand as far as people living here. We believe that the Crossroads is a well-balanced and thought-out residential apartment community that will stand the test of time. I'd like to read a quote that one of our team members wrote. It says, "Situated as it is on the corner of Liberty Wagner Road, the Crossroads location has the potential to be an important transition from Ann Arbor into Syle Township. At present, this intersection feels quite industrial. This project will be viewed frequently by drive-by viewing public as a handsome and activated threshold into Syle Township." So with that, I'd like to let Joe, the civil engineer, possess his information. Thank you.
Shannon, if you can flip over to the third page of the utility layout. So I'm gonna do a brief overview of the site plan and the site utilities. And as Dan noted, you know, the vision was to get the village common areas within the center, basically to help promote active open space use. One of the ways to accomplish that, and that we've done previously in the office complex, was to keep those buildings close to the roadways. So one of the, two of the deviations we're looking for today have to do with the setbacks from the center line of the roadway and the setback to the buildings. Previously, I can tell you when. Back in May 29th, 2020, the office project had applied for the same variance, slightly different, because we're a little bit closer now, and was granted a variance through the ZBA to bring these buildings closer. As you'll notice on the site plan, the setbacks really are relevant along this area now, because majority of the buildings on the north side of Liberty Road are all within this 110-foot setback, actually going down to 77 feet, 87 feet all along there. So what we're seeking is to bring the two garden court buildings that are along Liberty Road to 80 feet within the center line at a 40-foot setback. The podium, one building that's on the corner along Liberty Road, would be within 90 feet of the center line, or still a 40-foot setback. And then the podium building two, which is along Wagner Road, would be brought to a 100-foot setback versus the 110-foot setback, and again, a 40-foot setback from the right away. So that's the deviations that we're seeking in order to pull those buildings forward. As you can imagine, as we pull those buildings forward, that opens up more space in our village common area to kind of give those residents the space they need and the space we want to give them for open, active recreation. Shannon will go into a lot more detail on how we accomplish that and what those items are. So going into the site engineering portion of this, like with the previous project, we had a water main that was looped through the project. Again, we're carrying that forward with this project. The water main will be looped down along the southern roadway, up between the podium building two and garden court five building, and again, out to Wagner Road, creating the water main loop through the site that provides our water service to all the buildings and fire suppression to the two podium buildings and the community building. We did have a few review comments from the fire department and the township engineer regarding moving a few hydrants and things like that, and we don't have issues with any of those minor revisions as we get into final site plan on this project, making those corrections or requests that they've made. Sanitary sewer, obviously, we're extending the public sanitary sewer that currently exists in Liberty Road. This sanitary sewer actually runs down behind this office complex, all the way down to Jackson Plaza. As part of our study, we did a capacity analysis, actually originally back in the office complex. And again, with this project, with the increased use that we're gonna have, and there was no outstanding issues with that. I think OHM will be on later to address more of the concerns about that. But when we went through the office complex, we were noted that, you know, there is excess capacity in the system, and it does certainly appear like we've got the capacity and the system to make this work. Should there be any need for upgrades, obviously, we can discuss that when they're discovered further on down the road for final site plan.
The limitation on the units is based upon the sanitary, and there's one that's a thousand of those things.
Oh, yeah, well, in the review from OHM, and I think Wardman Doug, I think that was in your review too, you know, the site, based on the capacity of the site, is based on the available sanitary sewer capacity. It was one of the key items on how this PUD in this area was going to be rezoned and developed. So we believe that that exists for this project to move forward.
It stays in there with the zoning, it is, is that the sanitary sewer is the only limitation on the number of units. So if you have adequate sanitary sewer, it accepts it. And when we went through the, things are gonna come online later. But when we went through for the office project, they said it was approximately 1,000, or they called it REUs.
REUs.
REUs in this district. We'll use maybe 180 of them for this project.
180 REUs for the entire complex?
Yes. And maybe a little less now that we're drops the size of some of these units down to six. We have like 40 that are now 600 square feet, which we didn't have before. But we haven't ran those numbers.
So last part of the utility design is the stormwater management system. All the stormwater is collected by storm manhole structures within the street. But unlike a standard project, we're using underground infiltration for our stormwater management. And of the 80% of the site that we collect and connect to the center infiltration bed, 100% of that is infiltrated. And I just thought that it's kind of an interesting fact here. When we had our infiltration testing done by G2, Washington County Water Resource Commission allows you to design around 10 inches per hour. Our site averages in most of these areas over 100 inches per hour. So we're, what is it, 1,000 times more than the minimum code allows us to infiltrate. So the idea that we probably have an overflow out of this into the storm pipe that's existing, is probably quite unrealistic to think that it might happen. Not to mention, with the agreement, the Nye Field Hall, which also previously entered the storm basin that you see out there now, the big hole in the ground, is actually going to be captured and pulled over to the other southern infiltration bed. We're gonna have another infiltration bed there, 100% infiltration. That system, again, is 105 inches per hour, the capacity of the sand in that area. So we're taking their entire building and parking lot and infiltrating that as well.
The sand is beautiful on the site. I want to take it off, put it on the golf course.
So going with that, you know, previously, the office complex had petitioned the Drain Office to also abandon the drainage district that was here. That paper was completed and approved as part of the previous site plan. That was back in October of 2020 when that document was put through. We agree that the drainage district probably isn't needed anymore. With the PUD, we'll have a master plan and a development agreement between the developer and the township for the maintenance, continued maintenance of the system. As time goes on, basically, I don't know what the, I think it's forever then, really. So, but the existing storm line that runs through the property, the 42-inch storm sewer, will stay because it does service the properties to the south. Two things left, trash service dumpsters. We do have two garbage dumpsters on the property at this time. One on the southern east corner, one on the southern west corner. One serviced the community building and one of the garden court buildings in the center. The other one will service the other two garden courts in the center. All the townhomes along the south will have individual carts that will be located in their garages. They all have garages for parking. Podium building one and two, they both have lower-level parking, where trash chutes can come down, collect the trash in the basement, and also be wheeled out on trash day, so that we don't have to have another garbage dumpster outside in the open. And the same thing with the two garden court buildings along Liberty Road. That has an underground parking garage, so it'll have trash chutes and trash bins located in the basement there as well.
To locate that, that's where the big detention pond is now, big hole in the ground? If those buildings, that's very tough, the west side, left side, one of the first two of them. And we're putting parking below that, so essentially, we're using the existing excavated area, and we'll use it as a public parking in there. It's already excavated, it's a huge hole, quite frankly. So we'll just use that.
Clean it up a bit.
Clean it up quite a bit, but that's the, I was more saying for placement of where that is located. Because if you drive by, you see the detention pond.
And that leads right into my last item here, you know, parking. I went over that, you know. Townhome units have two-car parking garages with some room in the front there as well, driveway space if you need to park another one. Podium buildings have extensive underground parking. You know, the idea is to get the parking out of surface lots, get them in locations where there's already buildings, that we can also help increase the open space for the residents. So you've got podium one, podium two, full underground parking, garden court one, garden court two, underground parking. We don't quite meet our full parking calculations of 445 spaces needed. I think Doug will wind up this a little bit more. But because of the townhomes and the smaller-sized homes, it's our feeling that we really don't need all this parking, which is why we're also proposing to put 24 parking spaces and land banked parking. So the spaces are there, should happen to need them later on down the road. But at this point, we don't really feel that they're necessary, given the number of single-bedroom units that are on this property. We also proposed, we'd need approval for 13 compact parking spaces located on the south side of the project, close to the community building. As we know, cars are getting smaller, electric cars. So we don't feel that, you know, having every space nine by 20 is a efficient use of parking space and pervious space, where we can have plantings, additional plantings along that area. So basically, we would need approval for the fewer parking spaces, compact spaces. So with that, I think I'll leave it over to Shannon.
All right.
One thing, I think even with the, we're only a few sites short of what's required, aren't we? required, aren't we? Four or five?
Yeah, I think we're within.
It's with, it's very, very few. And quite frankly, if you have six hundred square units, which we have now, I think we're going to have like forty of them, you only have one car. You don't have two cars for all those units. You just don't, that's what you're, that's what's required by code. It's two plus so much for, for guests. And, uh, it's, that's, it's nice, it's nice, but it's also not necessary. And if you're looking to create green space as opposed to parking lots, you know, there's, there's a ration, there's an easy direction to look at. So, but we have the number that's required by code, but as Joe says, we're going to land back some of them because like, we don't think we're going to need them.
Does that mean you're going to land base them?
So what we're doing is we're, we're holding the space for them. You'll see, especially along that arch curve, um, we have the space located for the spaces, but we're not actually building them. Yeah, right in that area, yep. And then there's some across the street from that, so we have the room to build them if necessary, but we just don't want to do that right now because we don't feel we need it.
These spaces that are marked off are not going to be constructed, they're just being shown where they could be.
Where they could go, correct.
If, maybe the best way to phrase it, if demand is, requires them, um, uh, to, to be built, they can, there's a, there's a location for them to be built up, it's planned for it.
Right now, you're just calling it old space.
Correct.
And Doug assumed that it has, I don't know if I'm.
Yeah, it could ask.
There are some clarifying questions, that'd be fine.
Okay. Um, you said earlier that your presumption is there would only be one vehicle per unit?
For the smaller units, for six hundred square foot, you're only gonna, you're gonna get maybe a one person living there, possibly two, but the idea would be that a lot of young people don't have to, you know, when they are together, they don't need it. Plus, one of the things we want to do is work with the township on the corner of Liberty and Wagner, we'd love to put a park, a, uh, for a bus stop there, and we want to work with the township to create, so we have a, a pathway all the way into Ann Arbor. It's almost there now. So what we would do is work with the township to make sure that is. And I think you're going to get a lot more people. My daughter's doesn't even have a driver's license, you know? She, and, and there's a lot of young people like that nowadays. And with something like, you know, forty, forty percent, sixty percent, sixty percent of this to be younger people, people, I think we'll have a, we, when I did this, uh, six eighteen South Main, my partners were on Chicago, oh, you need all this parking, I said, we're not going to need it. Build a hundred and twenty-one parking spaces for a hundred and sixty people. There are thirty to forty of them empty, okay? So the idea is that parking is, is, if we have to do it, of course, I think, but the city of Ann Arbor is now doing a mid-rise or high-rise downtown with no parking. I mean, it's fascinating to me.
Well, that makes sense in the downtown.
Yeah.
In urban area.
Exactly.
There is no bus route that goes by there.
Yeah, it comes out Liberty and turns at, at Wagner.
Oh, it does? Okay. And then it goes over to Dexter Ann Arbor Road?
Uh-huh.
Or Jackson.
I think it goes down to Jackson. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wait, wait.
Commissioner Hyde has a question too.
Yes, earlier you said something about the percentage of open space in this, and I didn't capture that. Do you tell me?
I, I, I have a hard time understanding what's open space.
Open space.
There's an open space.
Fifty percent of the space?
Fifty?
It's about forty-eight point four.
Forty-eight point four.
In this view, I see red as the building, green as, uh, gardens or whatever, and the brown in the center.
I tell you what, let Shannon know her, because you're, you're, you're walking right into what she's trying to present you.
I planted that, I planted it. If you could progress to the next slide.
Another basic question.
Sure.
Let's talk here. Anyway, when was the, is the construction supposed to begin, according to your plans at least?
When would construction begin?
Yeah.
It depends when we get approvals.
What's the projected plan like?
Well, ideally, we were shooting to try to get the site construction to begin late this fall and residential, the building construction next spring.
I see.
But it really depends on how long it takes to get through the process. If it's too late in the year, then it would start next year.
Right, and based on late fall, when do you expect it to be complete?
It's about, it's less than two, two years, about eighteen months period, or probably less than that. Yeah, it really depends on, uh, somewhat on the weather and when we start.
And you talked about leasing, is all these good leased by?
Everything's for rent.
Everything's for rent?
It's an apartment project.
Okay.
Yep. It's apartment community.
And then you still have a question too? Were you done?
Uh, no, not. And, and what's the total number of occupants again now?
Total number of units?
Two hundred. Uh, projected occupants. Um, I mean, based on, what, what is the number of occupants?
I don't, I don't have that number for you.
So, then how are you projecting the things like parking, things like?
The, the zoning requires a certain amount of parking.
Okay.
We've satisfied that within a few parking spaces. What I was suggesting is that if you have smaller units, let's say of six hundred square feet, and there's just one people, one person living there, there's not going to be two cars. The, the zoning requires two cars, right, for, for apartments, and so many for, it's ten percent for an overflow or something like that. So what I was suggesting is that what the zoning requires is probably going to be excessive when you're starting, when you use apartments that are smaller, because you don't have two people. It's assuming the, the zoning for a silo township is assuming homes, right, with a family, two cars. That's not what this is. This is an apartment community. So you'll have a diversity of young people, young families, and then people that are older retirees.
Okay, so you, you're not projecting a certain number of people in this whole?
We, we certainly can do that if you'd like that information.
I'm just asking you.
No, I don't have those numbers off, off hand though.
I just try to understand the size of the community, that's all.
Yeah. Well, I think Joe's.
Hundred, is it one thousand, one million, that counts?
Joe did a, Joe did a traffic study, or they did, they do a takeoff.
Exactly. That's what I was going, that's exactly what I was going.
Yeah, so, so the traffic study is, is won't be completed till final site plan. Um, that's when we'll get into the final details of the traffic study, and that's when it's noted on the review letters that we'll be turning that in at final. We did a traffic study for the office complex, and it, it turned out that there was some minor signal improvements that needed to be done at Wagner and Liberty. Um, those actually have already been done due to a power failure and hull collapse there by the road commission, so I don't know that we're going to end up needing any more improvements at that signal, but I won't know till that traffic study is complete.
Because the road after, Wagner after Liberty is kind of narrow, that stretch, am I right?
Which direction are you referring to?
I'm referring to going away from, going away from Jackson, the other way towards.
Going east toward Ann Arbor?
I've got my job wrong, going to it, uh, going to it, Saloon, I don't know.
Oh, on south on Wagner, yeah, the next roundabout.
Right, yeah, the roundabout, the road becomes kind of narrow after you cross Liberty. Until Liberty from Jackson, up to Liberty, the road is pretty wide, and it becomes narrow, correct me if I'm wrong.
Still the road after that, yeah.
So, I guess that brings up a question about the traffic study that I'm alluding to right now, which translates into how can people in the units, if you, how does it affect the traffic and how does it affect the size of the lanes?
Again, it would be determined based on the traffic impact study.
Right, right.
Once we, once we get into that stage of the project.
That's it.
You get another whack at us.
Yeah, no, I mean, all of you relate to each other, I think, directly relating to each other. The number of people in the units were.
You know, there's at least two hundred and twenty-one people.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. You're right.
Twenty-two. There's, there's probably, we, we don't, we, I can, you know, I can go through the market study and, and I'm sure they have a projection for it, so.
That would be very useful, actually.
Okay, I guess I've been framing for you.
Immediately, it makes a lot of sense to understand that number. Anyway, a lot more questions, please proceed.
All right. Okay, so we're looking at the whole site plan, um, and so, I don't know if you can quite see it from where you are, Commissioner Hyde, but the, the green areas, you know, pop out a little bit more easily in this than the, than the other version of things. Um, and so again, um, because this parking is underneath so many of the units, we really have much more opportunity for, for green space here, meaningful green space, not just little leftover pieces of things, but that central common area we really feel is important. Um, so it actually, you could go on to the next, uh, slide. Um, yeah, so I'm going to give you a tour of the green space, um, and the, the surface, the surface treatments. So this is, uh, showing you in the blue where we actually have surface storm water management, uh, in the form of fire retention or rain gardens and native planting areas. So the blue are where we're managing water at the surface level. Um, and we have long swales that go along Wagner Road and along Liberty Road. Um, if I had my daughters, I'd put them everywhere, but there's a lot of utilities there, so I can't live wherever I want to. Um, and we've done these all over, all over town, we have a lot of experience with these, and we, um, we love the native plantings, and it's pretty incredible to see them start showing up at these things. It's really neat to see all the, the, um, butterflies and birds and things like that that start happening with, with these systems. We also have an area of, uh, prairie along some of the steeper slopes, uh, along the Wagner side as well. Um, and I also just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of reminder of that, that photo of the pre-existing site conditions, that's from two thousand and eight, when this whole site was utterly scraped clean, um, in anticipation of a development prior to any of this work too. And it has come back, you know, weedy and with some cottonwoods, and so I feel very confident saying that even though we are adding a whole lot more asphalt and units of, of housing, we are going to be creating more ecological diversity on this site with our proposed planting because of all the native plantings that we're doing, um, through trees, shrubs, the rain garden areas that are full of, of native plants, prairie areas, um, than, than what is there now, which is pretty paltry and, you know, it's highly disturbed. So when that happens, you don't get a lot of actual, uh, real healthy diversity coming up. Um, so I think that we're going to put it back better than, than the way that we found it, actually. So, uh, if you could move to the next slide. This is a little blow up of the, the common area. So really, we see this as the heart of the development. This is a place where people can come hang out, this is where we want people to be able to have an opportunity to gather. Uh, we have little nodes here where we're, um, going to be putting, uh, benches and, uh, my favorite bench swings. I think adults need a place to have fun too. Um, places for kids to be able to play, um, to be able to bike around, things like that. We also have a community center that will have a pool and fire pits, um, and just some open green space. Uh, we also have an area where we want food trucks to be able to pull up, um, next to a pavilion that we're going to have in that area as well. So again, place where people can meet, place where people can gather, have events, um, and then have, again, having this density allows something like food trucks to be able to happen. There's enough people there to be able to make something happen. It's a lot harder to pull that off in houses that are much more spread apart. Uh, if you could move on to the next, please. I'd like to also talk about the walkways and other open space. So we've been very mindful about connecting all of the units, connecting it with the outside walkways, putting, uh, walkways around the entire perimeter of the site, especially in the south there, um, so that people can walk throughout the development. Um, as you know, the development rights have been purchased to the area to the south there, so that should be quite lovely to be able to walk along that, that southern, um, area over there as well. Um, bike parking scattered, uh, throughout is definitely a plan too. And then, um, we all love our dogs, but millennials really love dogs, so we are going to do a dog park in that little dog leg off to the left there where our other storm water infiltration is, that area is down, down over there. So.
In the pink area?
In the pink area, yep, yep. So, um, yeah, with that, that's the, that's really the tour of the site, and I will hand it off to Rob, our architect.
Thank you.
Ms. Ward, did you have a question that we've overlooked? I'm sorry.
I did have a question, but I didn't want to be interruptive, so I can wait till I bring it down if you like.
Please, if it's open dialogue, if you want to now, it's fine.
What was my question?
Trying to stump your net.
Oh, back to the, um, the setbacks. Um, I know, I know, maybe it's, it looks like your buildings are right on the road, not literally, but they're really close to the road. And I'm wondering why, um, I'm just looking at the V, the Liberty and the Wagner, why wouldn't they sit back off of the road a little bit?
Well, they're, they're forty feet off, and there's a great deal of plantings and other things in between the two. They're not right on the road at all.
Thirty farther than forty feet. The setback from the right of way line is forty feet. Um, the buildings are actually even further than that.
So I'm just looking at your side, is this a sidewalk that runs along here, the building seems to be, how far from the sidewalk are you, the buildings set back from the sidewalk?
Um, the sidewalk is actually typically run the one, yeah, no, yeah, I know what you mean, yeah.
I'm reading that, right.
So, right of way is typically one foot.
Yeah, these are sidewalks, right?
Yep. So, yeah, so the right of way is typically one foot inside, in, well, outside of the roadway, right along that edge, and then from that edge to the building face is forty feet. So we're basically forty feet off the walkway.
Plus another fifteen or so.
Plus, yeah, plus another ten, fifteen feet before the edge of the roadway. So we've, we've still got a good buffer between the roadway, you've got the sidewalk.
Fifteen feet, did you say?
From the roadway to the walkway.
And then from the walkway to the building.
From the walkway to the building is another.
So from curve edge.
So I'm talking about from the sidewalk to the building.
Forty feet.
Forty feet.
And you're, you're, you're requesting deviations, you want, you want these buildings, and I'm just looking at the Liberty Wagner, right? You want, where do you want this deviations to be? I couldn't catch all the names of the buildings, I apologize.
It's actually a two-part deviation, it's, instead of a fifty-foot front setback, we're asking for a forty-foot front setback, but because the roadway has other requirements, which is the setback from the center line of the roadway, we also need deviation, center line of the roadway to go along with the reduced front setback.
So I can explain everything. A little bit of a lull over from some other stuff, you can, you can talk about the setback.
Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't gather it all, and I didn't want to be interrupting, but, so my question to you is, this looks close to the road, to the sidewalk, not the road, I understand what you're saying about that. So I'm, I'm asking, why couldn't you push the whole project? I mean, you have room, a P U D, you're only required to have thirty percent open space. And as I understand from reading Doug's memo, you have about forty-eight percent, something like that. So I'm just wondering why you're, it seems like you've pushed the project up on, toward the road, like it's on the road, and I don't mean that literally, but instead of being a little bit off of the road, which we like a little bit, you know, so that you don't have that.
Yep. I'd say two things. One is that there's actually across the road, quite a few buildings that are even closer to the road than these will be. There's a lot of non-conforming structures.
That would not be a good reason for me to not ask a question.
I'm just telling you that the context.
Because that's, I wasn't on the planning.
Okay, I'll just say that the context, though, it's not going to feel like weird because there's buildings across the road that are actually closer, just to be able to set that stage. And then I think really what it comes down to is where we feel like the quality of the open space should be, and that we feel like having a meaningful center like this, where people can really gather, you can throw a football around if you want to, if you're a kid, you can ride your bike around, you can have space to be able to really have a meaningful area that's close to an acre in size, felt more important than an extra ten feet of the road. I think that's really kind of what it comes down to in a lot of ways, is, is.
I'm just wondering, you could move that whole V shape back, you don't, you don't take up some more of your open space, just.
Right, so we're not required to have more than thirty percent, but we feel like it's a higher quality of life to have higher than thirty percent. So we, we totally understand that we are exceeding that, and we think that's a good thing.
And if we could exceed it more, we would.
It, we just think it's going to be better for the residents there, it's going to be a better place to live.
Two, two other things, two, or one of the things, one is that, this is something that came up in the office, we have, was it two fronts, Joe?
Yeah, we've got two fronts.
Yeah, we've got two frontages.
So instead of one of them would be a side, which would be a twenty-foot setback, right? And instead of that, we have two fronts. So if, if we had called one of these aside, instead of, instead of a forty-foot setback, which we have, it could have been twenty. Well, we can't do that because of the configuration of this. We end up having per zoning and the way it's looked at is two fronts. So some of what we're trying to do is balance these kind of things to create something that makes sense. There's a dynamic tension with all land use, right? How do you, how do you fit things together to make sense? What's your priorities? If you look at the plantings that Shannon has put, and her company have put along the edges, you're going to find that this is going to be as probably as, for one, private, creates a streetscape that is going to be very attractive to people because of what's been done in that forty feet. As opposed to you do fifty feet and you don't do anything, who cares, right? Because you don't have to do anything. Well, we've want, decided that we want to do that. It's important. We have a huge budget for our landscaping and I've worked with Shannon for a number of projects and it's always well worth it because what you end up, the visual sense of it is dramatic. I mean, you have some pictures of those plants, those grasses you've done, could you go back one, Jan, is that possible? One more, I guess. See, those are all things that Shannon's company has developed. These grasses, these landscaping along the road, I mean, these are very lovely sort of things that are encouraging to me and to many people. And so when you drive by them, it creates a softness. And one of the things that's in the master plan is creating this sort of peripheral plantings, trees and things that keep, continue the sense that Sile Township is a more, a rural transitional sort of community. And I think with what Shannon has done here within that forty feet, it does exactly that, that intent that's in the master plan.
My other question is, is why do you want a PUD? Why not just build a residential community?
You couldn't do this. You couldn't do it. You cannot, you cannot do clustering and this sort of creative sort of development in a, in a regroup.
You require the reclustering, but you could build a different, I'm just asking you, why do you?
I could go in here and level the darn thing and put all, all the parking and make it all asphalt and put up buildings and I could legally do that. But that's not what I want to do. That's not, that to me is not attractive.
Do you want to finish, let them finish their presentation or is it a?
Really sure.
Okay.
I hear you saying that the common area in the center that's colored green in this is about an acre. I'm having a hard time with scale.
Yeah, once you include the common building, the community building, the pool and everything associated with all of that.
Common elements that are all part, all connected in there.
The common building.
Yes.
The green, the green, the village green or the center, the common, is a little bit more than half an acre or.
More than just a little space, yeah, once.
So all those common elements together.
Throw a football in my head. My arm is as good as it used to be.
She didn't say, she didn't say play football, she said throw a football.
More than ten feet, you can throw.
It's, it's a bow.
I, I think it's going to be more people running around than it is going to be a real deal soccer fielder. I, I think that's the reality.
What's the benches show?
The long stretch along the parking lot area is about two hundred and forty feet long. And then it's almost a hundred feet deep. So I mean, just as the general triangle there in that open space.
It's a good size.
Yeah.
It's a good size. It's usable, you know, it's functional. You can get privacy, you can get group things done there. And then Rob is from OXE.
No, I just, Jan was scrolling. The one previous would be great if you could, Jan, please, thank you. I know we've seen this before, but I'll, I'll try to up my tempo a little bit. I know we've spent a lot of time on presentation, but I do want to talk a little bit about some of the site planning gestures, as well as some of the architectural components. Dan already touched on kind of the, what I would term as our building typologies, the, the three different types that we have clustered around the site itself. But I do want to point out some of the entry points and some of the design configurations in terms of why and how we place some of these key buildings. Just to reclassify or reiterate what Dan identified, the southern boundary are the townhomes. Those are basically into, you know, single-family residences clustered or tied, bound together on a common wall. Their orientation, their primary orientation, the front doors are towards the streetscape. Garages are located there. The side, we actually could have run a whole string of these and increased the density of those townhouses. We determined to break those up into smaller chunks for several reasons. One in particular is that on the end units, the two end units, we actually have, we're not parking nose in from the street, we're actually parking from the side, which gives us a unique adaptation in terms of how they lay out. Most clear, obvious one is the, the bottom right-hand corner of that townhouse cluster. So we basically are creating parking courts that allow people to, we're trying to diminish the amount of garages fronting the street. So it gives a stronger application to front doors as opposed to garage doors. It's, it's really trying to play that down. They will have garages, each of these will have a two-car garage as well as the apron parking in front of them. The backside, which is almost in many cases the front side of them in terms of living adaptability, is all of those are directed to the immediate south. And those have, based upon the wonderful acquisition by the township, glorious unencumbered views into the, in perpetuity towards the, the open space immediately south as well. So that lines our southern boundary. Before I get any deeper into the development, I just want to point out, there's two key access points, vehicular access points, there's a whole plethora of pedestrian access points, but there's two key vehicular access points and they're strategically located. The one in the bottom right of the screen is existing. That's shared with nine year old. That's, there's an access, he's been over that, which allows us to circulation into the property itself and extended property. The, we'll call it more, maybe the more formal entry is a centralized entry that separates the podium, podium one on the left side and from the garden court to the right side. That is intentionally aligned with the access to the office park across the street. So those are somewhat of our fixed entry points from a, from a vehicular access consideration. Shannon identified very clearly all the pedestrian access points to this as well, which again are plentiful, bringing you all the way across the frontage lines on both sides. Basically, there's a faux loop that would take you around the entire perimeter of the property if you didn't want to actually engage in the center of it and all the fingers that come out of that center core itself. So the townhouses is sequestered on the south boundary. We can go to the garden courts. The garden courts to kind of elaborate on, well, let me take a minor step back and just concentrate on the townhouses. We'll go into some imagery of each of those that'll give a little bit more definition. The townhouses are two stories. The garden court and townhouses are all two stories, maxed out heights of thirty-six feet. So those are compliant. We'll talk about the podium and their heights a little bit more down the road. The townhouses are two stories, bedrooms on the upper level, living and garages on the lower level. Several of them have front door entries, some of the side entries that marry to the parking courts, the drive access courts, like I described. They will constitute both, about, I believe the sizes were about twelve hundred square feet for a two-bedroom and I think seventeen hundred square feet for the three-bedrooms. Those are primarily on the ends. So we have a little bit more flexibility in terms of that layout. These are very popular right now. Rental housing is, rental houses really, as departments is a very popular choice. Very difficult to find, particularly in Dexter, particularly in Ann Arbor. This is a great opportunity to apply that in a unique, modern fashion right along this, within this property itself. Moving from that then to the garden courts, those are equally two, or equal in terms of height, two stories overall, but those are a completely different composition. These are what we would term stacked flats. Each one will have its own independent access, or I should say, a common access to the upper levels via stair, basically it comes up a central stair and split off to either side. There's no need for an elevator based upon that design. So they're all intentionally designed to be very walkable intentionally. The lower levels actually have direct walkouts and we'll see in some of the enlarged architecture that we'll talk about in a moment. Those are uniquely designed, so we have kind of a, if you look at it from this perspective, kind of a barbell look, two broader outside corner, two, two broader outside units on either side. Those are two-bedroom units, the interior units are one-bedroom. At each level, you have a dedicated outdoor living space that's all your own. The first level, those will be walkout terraces, the upper levels will be walkout porches. We're really adopting this with kind of a, maybe just because they happened to have been Charleston in the past year, but kind of the Charleston piazza, the two-story terrace or, or deck look, excuse me, porch is much better than deck look. Distinctly porches covered up above as well. So you have outdoor living space for your own units and those will actually be fully covered on both first and upper levels. There's five other garden courts. Each of those is designed to be sixteen units, eight per story. The lower levels will have direct walk-in front doors, the upper levels have this common stairs that they share between the second unit. Let me get to the podiums. The podium is more of a unique building technology. We're kind of going, I guess in terms of my little storytelling, we're going from kind of lowest density to highest density in terms of my discussion. Also going from maybe a more common building typology to a, a less common, but maybe more frequent building typology and maybe a more urban center.
Where are the podiums?
Podium buildings, and that's where I'm going to go next. Podium buildings are the ones that distinctly line the corner. Those are, lower level is a parking level, drive-in, full parking. You would have a, a, a front door from the internal portion of the site. You would have a garage door from the internal portion of the site. We would, we would encompass a lot of features beyond parking in there, any amenity space or trash storage, as we talked about. And uniquely to these as well, bike storage. So we have a tremendous amount of bike parking internal to these, these structures. The upper three stories, these are four stories overall, forty-eight feet in height. So we're, this is one of our ultimate requests that we're looking to discuss this evening as well. The zoning ordinance allows two stories and thirty-six feet as a, as part of the underlying district. We're asking, we're, we're good on the townhouses, we're good on the garden courts. The podiums are our exception and there's, I'll bring up several reasons in just a moment. First and foremost is just, is true density. Density is, is very important. One of the attributes that allows us to have this, this ample amount of open space is in fact the density that we're creating somewhere else. If we were to bring this property in regards to single-family, if we were to look at three thousand square foot, single-family houses, we'd be nowhere near what we're looking at. Trying to increase that because it gives us an opportunity for outdoor living space, outdoor amenities, these common zones that we discussed. The other element is particularly on the Wagner Road elevation. That rises up over a full story in height at its crest, which is roughly the middle of what we're determining podium B, that's the taller building on the upper area of the, of the site, along Wagner itself. So our whole lower level is not only functionally masked, but even a portion of the second level, which is our first level of residential use, is partially masked by the physical geometry, the physical grading condition of Wagner Road itself and the physical grade that's on our property as well. We're going to carve that out to basically fit this in, if that makes sense. I can share again some images. This is meant to be a broad overview and we'll get a little bit more detail as I, as I roll through.
Can I ask you a quick, I think three, three floors?
Three floors on top of the podium, yes, four tall stories. That's correct. Three stories of residential and kind of give you how we kind of subtly change some of the massing that'll situate that a little bit too.
You're going to show us the relationship of the Wagner Road.
Yes.
To the building.
That's correct. We have a cross-section that shows you very clearly both the end of it as well as right in the middle of it, how that, how that great works in relationship to it. Jan, if I could, please. These are, I'll try to spin you through these relatively quick, I spent a lot of time talking already, we probably could have been spinning through these the whole time. This is a series of aerials to try to set the table a little bit more and we'll jump in then in a moment to kind of some vignettes through the interior of the site itself. This is looking at the two podiums in particular, the intersection we're looking at. The left-hand road is Wagner, right-hand road is Liberty to, for orientation purposes. You can see where the heights really jump out. The other element of this is, this really does become a bit of a gateway presence, I believe, over Shannon or, or Dan addressed it, kind of that, that signature moment on entry into the township. There's a little bit of a signature moment intentionally designed as part of that as well. They are physically separated from one another. You can't see it necessarily because it's aerial, but this, again, we'll see some of the great changes we roll through. Please, Jan. Opposite side, kind of the exposure of the townhouses on the south side. See, we're, we're very fortunate again to have a very unencumbered open space immediately south. Please. And a little of the vignetted ideas coming up to the interior of the site. These, to the right of this image are, and I think we'll see another one right after this, and to the right of this image.
And just so people understand, you might want to say, this is like a massing model? It doesn't, it doesn't represent that this whole thing's going to be white. Okay, well, thank you.
We are, yes, our, our intent is to convey its sense of architecture as part of preliminary site plan where we, we're not obligated to. We have, we want to make sure we got through all this with you folks. And then we'll focus very critically upon that, so. But the intent of the design, the massing is there, yes. It's not intended to be, this would be a, harkening back to the nineteen fifty's modern movement where everything was white, sitting on the hill moment. So to the right of this image are the townhouses. You'll see the unique adaptation of that garden court again. You see the garage entry there, kind of really cool two-story glass space that really turns people around into their site as opposed to entering even directly from the front. So we're really trying to adapt the front of these buildings in unique adaptations so that they're not just garages, there's, there are clusters, that there's unique moments on each side. To the left then would be the, the first touch of the garden courts. If you can go another slide down, we'll get a little bit better view. You'll see this is a little bit more, we're kind of seeing that center core again. The, we're starting to see a little bit of the, the two-story piazza type terraces in the, the center core of this. These are the lower walkouts down below, the upper level is a covered roof structure. Very unique adaptation, that's something we see around here often. It gives ample amount, tremendous amount of outdoor living space for each of those units. Even the seven hundred and fifty square foot, single-bedroom ones, which are the two on either side of the, or two on the top floor that would front right onto that. I don't know what the script footage is, but that, you know, several months out of the year, minimally, that's going to be a great place to just hang out, particularly in varying locations too. This view happens to be facing due south, even north are going to have grand views across the plaza, the main common area itself. Jan, please. This is now taking us all the way down to that corner, the southeast corner of the developed site. Garden court is off to the left side of this image, to the right side is the podium. You're starting to see now the scalar massing of it in terms of its relationship to the rest of the site. So everything kind of has a staggering effect, again, both in terms of density as well as scale, going from slightly smaller, slightly bigger than the podium, which has a stronger presence. Uniquely to define itself along the roadway as well. Please. And now we're starting to turn back to the center. You can't quite see the commons from here, but you see the end of one of the garden court units fronting basically the bend in the road and you can see the, the podium off to the side as well.
Is that the reserved parking?
That is exactly what this is. And then a broad shot across the commons. This actually helps to truly give it scale. That's a really magnificent opportunity for an open space, an active open space, not just a green area. You see the pathways that lead back and forth, all sorts of unprogrammed opportunities to take advantage of it. And these garden court units, there's three that front directly on this, will all have that direct access to. So again, some really grand opportunities from a synergy between architecture and landscape, which we don't often see and we really have a luxury here because of the amount of open space that we're applying. Please. Now I can talk distinctly once again about the units, I talked a lot about them. This starts to identify, I added a little bit of, my team added a little bit of texture just to get a sense. These are unique too, the way we're structuring them. We don't sense that the formal aspect of the, what you're seeing from a building or an architect's side is going to dramatically change. We haven't studied the, the physical materiality in a broad sense. We're just starting to play with it. We're, this is, we projected board and batten just to get a feel for it. The unique way this is set up too is those end units in particular, as well as the center units, we have a big roof. We're trying to make the forms very simple and elegant. We have a big roof that comes down right to the streetscape, so we don't have big gables fronting it and it just has a nice scale to it. We carved out a little walkout patio, a walkout terrace on the backside of that roof, which would allow even the inhabitants of these, the, the townhouses to engage on their second floor of the street, which is another unique adaptation we're trying to introduce architecturally. You see the unit next to us, next to it to the right actually has the, the garage entry and then as well as their front door as well. Again, unique opportunities for bump outs, you're fine taking, moving on. These are, I should point out too, I won't talk to them, some of my projects, some are great images that we like. I'm talking, this, these are the garden court units. These are the sixteen, sixteen count, two stories. Again, just a subtle adaptation, so you can start to get a sense of the texture and Again, just a subtle adaptation so you can start to get a sense of the texture and a little bit more of the scale, broad window openings. The end units, there's two on the top, two on the lower level. On the ends of each of these are the two bedrooms. The central ones are the one bedrooms. Again, now you see these ideas of the two-story piasas. The walkout on the upper level that runs the full width of their unit. The lower levels runs the full width of their unit as well on all sides. So it's almost as if this building in a certain sense is one long wraparound porch, which is what we think is a wonderful idea and it really allows people to engage. The sensibility of having people connect to the streetscape instead of just going in your garage and closing it is really important to the entire team. So having these opportunities to sit on your front porch, wave at your neighbors walking by, walk yourself out there, wave at your own neighbors is just a grand thought.
May I add something just for a minute?
No.
Just as what we've done with the commons in the center, we've tried to do the same, Rob has done the same thing with the architecture. So you have inside and outside. You have these areas that become interactive. The whole idea is to create a community. You go on your porch, you're part of the community. You go in the commons, you're part, that's the porch for the whole project, right? So you have that, so that gets replicated and carried through as a design issue throughout the whole project.
Please. And then we get to the podium. The podium is, again, it's our highest density human technology. Again, the lower level you see has a slightly different articulation. We would still want to have some kind of a window system there. There was obviously an opaque window system just so we have a sense of place on the street itself. The center core of these buildings is the front door. And that has a unique stepping effect that kind of brings that away. We have a two-story streetscape feel and it slowly carves itself away as we get to the third and fourth upper level. The ends of these units, the end of the building as well, on the fourth floor of the third level of residential adaptation, also gets what we term shoulder back, pulled back a full unit depth. So those units become, I guess for a better term, one of the few premium units, largest units. There's only, what do we have, I did rough count more than I think we have.
Four per.
18 total three-bedroom units, which is really quite remarkable. So, and that's including six of the townhomes. So there's 12 in total in these, if I'm correct. I might be a little off. I think we're rating total in these, three-bedroom units. So those are really the only ones. You see the concentrations really have one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. But because of the unique nature of these, the heights, the views, everything else, and the opportunity to shoulder the building back, that end now becomes their walkout terrace on the upper floor. All the other units, actually the greater majority of the units will have some type of a balcony. And sitting above or sequestered above the podium, the podium will be the full dimension of the building itself. We're pulling the residential floors outside of the end back about six to seven feet. So the whole first floor of residential use, the second floor of the building proper, will be a walkout terrace condition for all of those units as well. Please. I did want to talk, I had a minor touch point about density. We've found this slide, I've had some, been looking at density. I've been looking at density for a long time. This is an interesting, this is not to scale, so I'm not trying to pull any, not trying to hoodwink anybody. But the upper image was a new urbanist design that was approximately 3.2 acres in size. That's 20 units an acre. You can see their center muse, which is a walkable common area that people will let the residential units abut. Is the core of it. All the others are townhouses that ring the entire perimeter. Very dense product overall. Ours is 20 units an acre based upon 10.4 total acres. So just trying to give a bit of a visual cue in terms of seeing what a dense 20-unit versus our 20-unit per acre model can look like. Please. This is podium one. This is the one right at the corner of Wagner and Liberty. This doesn't have this quite the same impact of Wagner Road, but it does have some impact. If you can see a little bit more closely. I try to, we try to add subtle little green tone to just add some dimensionality and a backdrop in regards to where the grade is beyond these buildings. The cut up above, you'll see Wagner on the section up above. There should be Liberty on the section up above is there. I think the second cut is through Wagner if I'm not mistaken. I can't even read it from this distance myself. Yes, that's Wagner, I can see it. So the top one, you'll see its relationship now, the right-hand edge of that is the curb on Liberty as presently composed. That dimension all the way to our building face is what we're actually looking at. Commissioner Moore, when you asked how far away from the curb. It doesn't, you can see where our sidewalk is in relationship. That's the 40-foot dimension we're referencing. There is topography there as well, particularly in front of the podium building. So it is a, you'll see there's actually, that's where a part of our rain garden is going to be located. So there's some interesting topography that actually will actually mask quite a bit of that from the streetscape too, as well as the plantings. The bottom one is cut through Wagner. You'll see the rise way off in the distance behind it. But you'll see even there, Wagner is actually above the first floor of the podium where that's cut, which is just past Liberty. It's rising immediately once across this Liberty southbound. Next one, please, Jan. This one starts to identify a little bit more distinctly. Both of these show where Wagner is in relationship to the main first level of residential. You'll see we're above the entire lower level of the plinth or the podium itself. Residential is the only part of this building you're practically going to see from Wagner Road. In fact, it's above that first level, the primary center point of Wagner itself. So functionally, you're looking at from Wagner, a three-story building in reality. And that would be within that roughly the 36-foot dimensional allowed by ordinance.
So that's further south on Wagner.
That's correct. That's correct. Please. And I just, I'm going to segue to Dan in just a moment with just a couple of other follow-up thoughts as well. There's a few of my thoughts regarding density, most of my address. One of the key things we want to point out is the other element of density is, I kind of touched on it, going from, we're proposing 600 square foot units at their smallest size. Our largest is just right around 2,000 square feet. That's smaller than most single-family homes being constructed right now. Which, so when we're talking about density in comparison to a single-family subdivision, we're well within the threshold of where those would be in terms of just the pure one numbers of what people, what the size of space people will be looking at. I did talk about the amenities as well. Final few talks, discussion points about sustainability. We've had plentiful discussions. In fact, Patricia Culberson has generated a lot of those along in conjunction with this. The goal would be to try to obtain a level of net zero sustainability as we can. This is in the study phase right now. Some of those elements that we would be looking at would be primarily particularly for the townhomes and the garden courts, the introduction of electric heat pumps. We would also propose that all of those two building technologies would be exclusively electric. The majority of the residential units internal to, depending upon our mechanical choices that are made for the podium building, that's a very different building because of its height and number of units that we have to deal with. We're not 100% certain we'd get by, I just pure electric on that. We may introduce some gas, our goal is not to. But certainly for the garden courts and the townhouses, we're going to go all electric. That would include electrical vehicle components as well. Each of the garages for the townhomes would have their own electrical vehicle charging station. The podiums would be structured to include a significant amount of electrical vehicle charging internal to that as well. And then we'd like to disperse several variety more around the site as well and minimally prepare for those in the future as well, dependent by medium want. We do know the ordinance is going to be down the Biden as well on that too.
So how would you think that would be?
I want to try and get to like the reports too, but if there are like.
I'm done. That's a gentle, gentle ride.
I mean, this is a very, I mean, it's a very important and, you know, complex development. So, you know, it's worthwhile the time, so you have clarification?
Yeah. When you talk electric units for heating, is this air-to-air or are you trying to go ground heat sources?
It's going to be air-to-air.
So I'm trying to picture that many units with air conditioning going or heaters. And if there's any issue with sound, I mean, I don't know how to, I don't know.
Actually, depending on what you choose and so forth, they can be very quiet actually if you do the whole climate.
Two or three different models that we're working with right now in a variety of different somewhat housing types, multi-family around this area. And we have had wonderful success in terms of noise. There's certainly going to be some, it's not that crazy, loud robust pop-on that you get where your home can't see it. It is a different, much more sedated sound.
Air-to-air.
Air-to-air, yes. We, there was a point in time, we were looking at geothermal in the previous iteration as an office. There is a, part of it is, some of the area we'd like to use, the most effective area would be our open area. That happens to be where we're doing all our infiltration too. So we, the second resort is to go into drilling wells and those become very, very expensive. So, we also have a grand last thought about it, then I promise I'll shut up until I ask questions. We also have grand solar orientation on the site, unencumbered to the south. Townhouses are an ideal opportunity to have photovoltaic panels on the roof, all oriented southbound. We have flat roofs on podiums, you can cluster PV farms up there as well. And about 50%, about half of the, actually four of the units of the garden courts have almost a direct southern orientation as well. So we are moving in that direction. That's something again, that is more of a final, presumptively, we'll get there with folks where we can have a deep, more detailed discussion of the opportunity to investigate that.
So much is cost, you know, and viability of how you apply it. We think about half the units, we can do electric heat pumps and all this. And we'll have to look at them on the other buildings and see our cause. I'd like to just add one more thing though. What we don't have here is pictures across Wagner Road. We're facing an asphalt plant and a concrete plant. We are down in a valley, you know? That asphalt plant is on a hill and it's got five stories on it. What we're trying to do on that is, is of course with the plantings and trees and stuff that Shannon and her company have done, create some sort of barrier. But we've got two things going on there. One is the site and the other is the smell. Okay? So we're trying, we're trying to create a project that is unique enough that will overcome some things that are drawbacks because of the site. And so when you ask about common spaces and all this community, this is part of it. You want to create something that people want to be at. And so they'll look up there and see an asphalt plant and go, that doesn't matter because I like what I have here. But these are things that where, that you have to be conscious of the environment around you, right? So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Loon.
Okay, thank you. Hope everybody can hear me. I like to, and these projects that are of this size and complicated nature, like to try to take, at least in my verbal report to the planning commission, a, you know, kind of more about 30,000, 30,000 of new, you know, projects. Project like this, I guess, as we get into, you know, get into the nitty gritty detail. Frankly, this stage of the review is not really for the nitty gritty detail. The stage of the review is for the planning commission and ultimately the township board to determine if a PUD is acceptable in this location based on the criteria of the PUD ordinance. It's also, also it's important to say, I'd like to mention that the planning commission should feel no pressure to act tonight. It would be actually more typical if the planning commission was to postpone any action on the plan tonight and try to address some of the, you know, the questions and concerns of the planning commissioners or had the applicant try to address some questions and concerns of maybe my office, Noah Jem's office. And then through this next agenda. In fact, you know, a number of years ago, we would, on a public hearing, we never took action. We would just take a public comment, automatically postpone to allow the applicant to address the comments. So I just want the planning commission to understand that there's no pressure this evening. This is a first time that you've seen it. This is a very complicated project. And I like to look at this as almost an exploratory meeting or planning mission. So kind of ask questions. And if you're not comfortable, there's, you know, again, please don't feel any pressure to act this evening. The PUD is a discretionary approval. It's not, it's not a user limited by rights. So the township ultimately has a pretty significant amount of discretion whether they want to approve a PUD or not. The planning commission and ultimately the township board will have to determine if the project is eligible for PUD. And there's criteria that I'll touch on in my report. You know, is the project eligible? An applicant, as I said, is asking for a PUD, this discretionary decision. They're asking for a high density. The density they're asking for is approximately twice as much as our highest density designation in the zoning ordinance. And they're also asking for a number of deviations from our zoning ordinance. So all of these things have to be viewed in the context and the lens of the planning and development ordinance and in what, how the applicant believes that they are meeting the recognizable benefit that you're supposed to have with a PUD. A PUD development is one of those cases where the applicant's asking for something and the township should be getting something in return. So we should be, you as planning commissioners should be thinking, you know, does this project deliver a recognizable benefit based on what you heard tonight to allow, ultimately the township board, to allow a multiple-family project on this site? This property is planned for, zoned and planned in a black and white sense for office industrial. However, there is a section of the master plan that extends the Jackson Road overlay district to cover this site. By extending the Jackson Road overlay district to cover this site, we also can consider high-density residential. And that is what the applicant is requesting tonight. As you heard from them, the applicant, they believe this site meets eligibility criteria because of open space. They clustered these units, smaller units and densely located within buildings on site rather than spread out all over the place, you know, all over the site. And that allows additional open space, that allows additional landscape. These are some of the things the applicant has mentioned this evening in their application. They believe that the architecture of the site is superior to something we would normally get. They're providing a center square area that's somewhat unique to developments like this within the township or really anywhere. They are proposing a product and that is a residential type home that's relatively small compared to new homes and construction within the township that our master plan indicates is needed within South Township. And that is a rental project that might be affordable for young people or people trying to move out of larger homes. So they're, you know, again, I'm kind of reiterating some of the things that the applicant said. And these are all items that you as commissioners have to be comfortable with before we move this on to the township board. Again, I'm trying to hit the high view of this and not get bogged down in some of the details about numbers of parking spaces and things like that. Those kind of details can be worked out. What we're trying to determine is, does this site qualify as a PUD based on what you heard tonight? I think you also have to consider, there's other factors that go into this. Mr. Kettler mentioned a couple of them. That's the location of this site. This site is located relatively close to the city of Ann Arbor. So if there is a site that would be appropriate for a higher density residential, you know, this probably qualifies for that. It's not, we're not talking about a site that's on the hinterlands of South Township. This is basically the edge of South Township with relatively easy access to the city of Ann Arbor. As was mentioned, it's across from an asphalt plant, you know? And that has its own challenges. It's south of an industrial park where the old government and science building is located. And south of the site is property now controlled by the township and there will be a future fire station. So nothing's going to happen south of this site. This is going to be the edge in this part of the township. And as mentioned, because of the density in this site, the township is allowing for, a way to think of it, the township is allowing for density. And adding density here certainly could preserve other areas of the township in open space. Where if you take these units and then spread these across South Township under our current zoning, this would chew up a lot of land. They are concentrating a lot of units in one location that's pretty close to Ann Arbor, across from an asphalt plant, south of the. south of an industrial park, north of a fire station. So I think, you know, the big picture issues, as I mentioned, one is the PUD okay here? Is the Planning Commission, ultimately the Township Board okay with the high density being requested? And are you okay with the number of deviations for this site? If you are, we have to look at those other things that might make this project unique and/or, a project that meets the criteria for planning. So our report, and I don't want to get too, we've got our report. It's 13 pages long. It goes, it does get into the minutia in some cases, but I think it's important to go over the big picture. But I go over that, a lot of the things I've just talked about. I talk about the master plan. We talk about area width height setbacks on page four. That gets into some of the deviations that are required. We talk about project density on page five, indicating that project density is about twice as high as our highest multi-family district. We talk about the eligibility of the PUD. These things like the local regulation plan, recognizable material benefits in the community, natural resources that might be on the site. Opened density, that is a natural reasonable increase in the for a vertical. Not the impact of pollination model. Minimize layers of tax. Minimize negative impact on surrounding properties. I've got the natural resources on the site. If you've been to the site, you've noticed that there's not a lot of natural resources on the site. It's been, it's rated, regraded over the years. It's pretty much an empty site with some scrub vegetation that's grown up over the years. We talk about the open space. The applicant's done a good job talking about the open space. I'll go into that, building location, site arrangement. There, there are a number of comments from some planning commissioners, as well as the applicant on building location, site arrangement, I think, other than the applicant has provided why they're doing it the way they're doing it. They were, by providing, by putting the buildings closer to the road, they think they can provide additional green space within the development. But that's, again, the deviations required are something that the Planning Commission has to deal with. Again, again, like circulation, traffic impact, central facility services, which I think Sally will talk about here in a moment, so will Noi Jem. Parking is what we talked about. The applicant, you know, with mining spaces, they're like three blocks. So I'm pretty comfortable with spaces. I mark that they're holding the open spaces, unless COVID service vendors are in. I need to get detail, ask if I don't be required, next stage of review as, as well signage, as well floor plans and elevations. And then we go into some of the PUD standards in our report on page 11. Very to talk about the deviations. And then we have, you know, 17 items to be addressed to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission. If I was to make a recommendation on this, I would make the recommendation that the Planning Commission postpone action or table action until the following day, I think you address those items, and bring this back. So that's, that's it. I don't mean to run through my report quickly, but I think a project this big and complicated, I think we can get stuck on talking about parking spaces. And there's. Any questions that we have to answer? We have Sally here, a reporter, and maybe I have other consultants.
Yeah, then Sally, and then we do need to get public comment. And then I think we can.
Can we have?
I'd like to, I guess, the full, yeah, about here. Okay, Sally.
Who's on? She was on. She's still on. Sally? Stacey, yes, Stacey, yeah. But you're both muted. Oh, there's someone.
I'm here. I know that Sally was planning on presenting, though. Not sure if she had technical difficulties. To be frank, I wasn't prepared. So if you could give me a second to pull up our letter.
Is she trying to get back in?
Something happening. She's, she's, she's at panel, I don't know. Oh, maybe she did, there she is.
It's choppy.
Is this better now?
Yeah. Give us the glasses.
Okay. Major technical difficulties, my apologies. All righty, so a number of things in my report were already brought up tonight. One of those being the sanitary sewer capacity. As the applicant mentioned, they are fine. Given the sewer metering study we did last fall, there is definitely. Let me move away from my computer. There is definitely capacity in the system. There's a lot more than what the applicant noted. So they are good there. And then we also had a number of PUD review comments, one of which being the public benefit. One of the things we will ask for as part of that will be an ingress easement for the adjacent fire station property. One of the other things we would ask for would be the connection to the pathway across Wagner and Liberty. I know this was originally discussed as part of the office project. So those are two recommendations we have for public benefit. As for the traffic impact study, the applicant has noted that they are working with the road commission on that. And then our site plan review comments were minor in nature, just mostly cleanup and discrepancy correction. So those are our major points in our letter. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I have, I don't have a question, but I have a request. I know a few months back, I requested a copy of the study that you did on the water system. And you said you would provide it, I think, to Jan or Doug. Did you do that?
Our presentation was provided. If you didn't get that, I apologize. I would absolutely be able to resend that.
Because it was a joint presentation with the board, and so it was, it'd be the presentation that was given, not the study itself.
So you don't have the actual study report? That's what I want, the actual study report.
Steve, I was asking if the utilities director had that. I'm sure he'd be willing to share that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Well, ask. We'll put that in a minute as a request to Steve. Okay. I have a question, and it has to do with the fire station. Do you know if the, are the soils very similar where the fire station is? So there'd be plenty of space for infiltration there? Or would there be any benefit to be, you know, since you guys have great infiltration, tagging onto that? But if the soils are very similar, it, it'd be much easier just to do our, do our own. Any idea on that?
I would have to go back and look at the actual soil reports we've done on that site. I don't know that we've done a full investigation on that site as we've only done preliminary engineering so far. But we could absolutely look into something like that.
Where does?
Even if proximity, I would assume is quite similar. But I don't have anything to back that up off the top of my head right now. But I could definitely look into that for you.
Relationship to this development, where exactly is that fire station proposed? I don't know.
Does anybody have an overview of where the, it's to the south?
I think it's directly south.
It's directly to the south on that property. However, the final location has not yet been determined.
Do we have a strip of land that goes on the south side of this property? And then we're east, a lot, it's a lot. Well, yeah, but is it a chunk that's out near Wagner Road? Or does it go all the way back to the back of this property, to the west of this property?
It's my understanding, it's its own lot. It's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's its own lot.
No, it's south of this.
No, it's right in here. Or does it come all the way back like this?
No, this is their open space to their project.
The open spaces, this is Syo Township. Their open space ends right here.
Oh.
Forty feet from the back of the townhouses is your property line?
Set back?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet from the back, yeah.
Thirty-five feet from the back of these buildings.
Power line runs right there.
Where they end. And then it's just to the south of that, that is somewhere in there, the fire station. And is the rest of it farm?
Yeah.
When we say open space, in this case, it's a farm.
Farm.
Yeah, so this is farm block, right.
I think.
So when you say.
Conservation.
Open space, it's, it's farm and a fire station. But I just don't know where.
Fire station is close, from what I saw the picture of. It's right off of Wagner, of course.
So it's close to it?
Yes, sir.
Is there some discussion about a water detention, storage, location along Liberty for the fire station, is that here too?
I, I don't know. I mean, I would think, you know, if the soils are good, you'd want to use the same strategy they're using with the pretreatment rain gardens and infiltration kind of thing, so.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, it would just be a matter of, you know, being able to tag team this. We don't. Okay.
We don't have a problem with the idea of running, you know, the stormwater off of there into our detention and, you know, what the costs are, what the thing are. But that would be certainly a benefit we could, would, could provide because we have so much, we have overcapacity for infiltration as it is.
It's really whether the County Water Resources Commissioner's office would allow something like that, so.
There's just a lot of runoff from that farm field that runs through there. That's a 42-inch storm sewer that runs through our property.
Yeah.
We can't accept all of that water through our stormwater.
It would be a matter of, the issue is, if it goes in there, then it can't be yours. Yeah. Okay.
Speaking of our resources, I know the applicant mentioned that they're planning to abandon the drainage district that currently encompasses the site. In the past, it has been township's precedent to require that any development with over 10 to 12 homes in it be a part of a drainage district to help with the maintenance. I understand where the applicant's coming from on this. And if they do choose to abandon that drainage district, we would require them to sign and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the township and the county to make sure that those systems are maintained properly.
Is that in your report, Lee?
Yeah, it was, it's my last PUD comment.
Yeah, I think so.
Sally, we'll certainly do that, but it's been abandoned already. All the papers been signed when we went through the office project. It's been abandoned.
Okay. I did not have record of that, so thank you for clarifying, for clarifying that.
If it's okay with the commissioners, I'd like to open up the, oh, well, have the public comment at this point. So is there anyone in the room that would like to, the public, make a comment regarding crossroads? All right, anyone online?
I've got a couple of hands going up. First one is Pam Boyd. So Pam, I'm going to give you the floor here. And you'll be able to see your bite.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, a Syo resident, Syo community news. To the developer, a quick question. Are you also the developer that developed Osland properties on Huron Parkway?
No.
No, okay. I saw a picture very similar to that in one of your pictures.
Yeah, the townhomes are somewhat, deviation from that, from that Osland structure, aren't they, Rob?
We'll give attribution where.
Okay, okay, the Osland is a, is a very beautiful project.
Yes, it is.
But I want to give you all sticktuitiveness award for your redevelopment plan that focuses on townhomes. I've been watching the Planning Commission for a couple of years now. And so I saw you in your previous rendition. And, and that, it is true that this property is somewhat of a sore thumb. My next comment is, is I have for some time felt that the definition of public benefit is, is wonky. A new bar has been set by the developer of Woodview Commons, where part of their public benefit, benefit will be donating a sum of money to help pay for a much-needed ladder truck. I see that with the, the parking underneath, you, you almost have a four-story building in some, some of your buildings. And so I just want to put out there that, that I think that there are better things than statues and signs to be public, labeled public benefit. And of course, the fire station's been talked about to the project south of you. The landscaping looks very promising. And I have a question, how many years do you expect it to take to be mature enough to add privacy along the main roads Wagner and Liberty? And fascinating about your number of, your water capacity on site. That's very commendable. What is your target market? Is it young professionals, retired, downsizing with the size of your units? And are they for sale or are they rental? And then finally, I'll, I'll add, although Doug really addressed some of it, is the density. Density in Syo Township is a sticky wicket with, with Syo residents. And, and I would like to see that discussed a little bit more. But then I go back to, you are on this unique island of a property in Syo Township that is surrounded by businesses, and, and one of them is a smelly, ugly one. So I'll go back and, and thank you for redevelop, your redevelopment plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another person?
Yep. Next person is Kathleen Brandt, Ms. Brandt. I'm pushing the button that allows you to address the Planning Commission. You have the floor.
Hi, this is Kathleen Brandt, Syo resident. I've started to become very interested in Planning Commission activities as a resident and how things are developed. I want to point out to the commission that, in my understanding, the number of REUs for this project, I heard it as 180. As I recall, the sewer capacity study said that Syo Township had 1,800 REUs available. So there is capacity. But let's keep in mind that this one development is consuming almost 20% of the available REUs. So this one development appears to me to be forcing infrastructure changes on Syo residents, taxpayers, because we will quickly run out of capacity. The second thing I want to point out is the building height. If, if the Planning Commission approves this four-story building, again, the, if you have watched Chief Hood do his presentation on equipment needs, this building would require a ladder truck. We don't currently have a ladder truck. So if the Planning Commission approves these larger, more-story buildings, as they have done at Heritage Woods, again, the Planning Commission is forcing a tax increase on the residents because we will have to pay for equipment. because we will have to pay for equipment to ensure safety for these buildings. So I, I, um, I take exception to that. Uh, the comment that this beautiful property is a gateway to Cyo, um, not in my view. Cyo, uh, to me is not four-story buildings. I think this is a gateway to Ann Arbor, but unfortunately, it's in Cyo Township. Uh, and also the, uh, the density, the two times density of any other thing we have in, in the township does not speak to me of the, uh, the character of Cyo Township. This speaks to me of the character of Ann Arbor, and I'm hoping to keep the character of Cyo Township as it is. And finally, uh, Mr. Wong made an argument that this high-density project would involve a huge amount of land if this number of units was built on other property. I find this to be a specious argument since this project does not preclude other development on other, all the other land that he references that this would conserve. If you said yes, this number of housing units will say that a certain number of acreage will not be built on, that's not what the master plan says, that's not what the zoning regulations say. So I found that to be sort of an untrue, um, statement. And with deference to the developer, I have no, I have nothing against the developer. I'm just a concerned resident about density and taxpayer values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, um, another hand up, Rob Patterson. So Mr. Patterson, I am clicking the button.
Thank you, Rob Patterson, so Township. Following Pam's and Kathleen's excellent, um, observations, I would point out that for us, for forty-some years, uh, Liberty Wagner has been the back door to Ann Arbor. Not only is it not a gateway to Cyo Township, it was always the back way to get into Ann Arbor. I've got some questions and, uh, some observations to hopefully help the planning commission. What are the projected rent, rental fees for the different units? Ann Arborites are famous for sharing rooms to make the high rents more feasible. Depending on the projected rents, I would bet there would be more than one person in the six-hundred-square-foot apartments. We had experience with a developer wanting to shoehorn four-hundred-and-eighty-four residential units, a four- or five-story hotel, a strip mall, and two restaurants onto twenty-nine acres. This project seems pretty dense, similar to that project. One thing not mentioned is how this project will impact traffic in the area. And in our case, the four- or five-story hotel was mentioned when the planning commission rejected the idea because Cyo doesn't have a ladder truck. Also mentioned in our case was the distance between buildings. There must be room for fire trucks and equipment to get between buildings in the case of a fire. Woodview Commons contributed to the fire department fund towards the ladder truck. Will that be part of this development? Woodview Commons, uh, set a high bar, the developer for Woodview Commons set a high bar, and other developers should follow their example in how they, um, worked with, worked with, emphasizing with, Cyo Township as they developed their ideas. What is the sewer capacity of the Liberty Loop? Does this project hog a lot of that capacity that was planned to be spread across a larger area of the township? We live on Zeb Road and it's loud. Liberty and Wagner are well on their way to being just as busy and loud. Plus, there's a traffic signal right there, so it also has braking and accelerating as well. Seems the buildings are very close to the road and that will be loud for residents. One thing this project has going for it, it's in a commercial area, so it's not an impact on a neighboring subdivision. And, and, uh, as Kathleen said, I, I, I have nothing against the developer. It's just this seems, you know, one of the things that happened with our developer was that it, it had the opportunity to set a precedent. And fortunately, that didn't happen, and this seems like this could set a precedent for Cyo Township. And, uh, I, I hope we could do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other hands up in the, the public watching from home.
So with that, um, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're closing the public hearing at nine PM. So, um, I just want to, uh, give commissioners an opportunity to, um, ask some more questions and, um, and I think, Doug, if you would frame like the, I mean, really, the big questions are eligibility for P U D. Um, and the density issue.
Density deviations.
And the deviations, the setbacks and so forth. So those would be the, you know, the larger, the kind of the beginning points.
Yeah, I don't need, I, I don't know if the other commissioners need more. But not clear.
They do. There's some questions around.
Go ahead.
So about density, um, can you, on the one hand, the developer has stated that with small units, having more units per acre, as owners has if you had a full-size house. Those side units, so. I can see on the one hand that that calculation might not be, uh, would lead you to think that you're twice as dense. However, if you just take the raw calculations, this is, this is, so do you have any kind of feedback for us to think about on whether having small units should be taken into account? And how we might take that into account when thinking about such a high density? Like that, I'm, I'm struggling to accept two times what we have allowed anywhere in our master plan.
Um, I could do, I'm probably not prepared to answer that right now, but I could do a little analysis of the current zoning and minimum home sizes and then try to compare that to what. My thought would be that what that is presenting, maybe some validity to that. You know, the, the more compact development, the more amenities, I'd say, um, in a broad sense. Um, but I, I would have to do a little, uh, of taking.
And we sort of alluded to it with one of the questions about a number of people. The, the number of persons per acre, you know, from this development might, might not be, I don't know. Like in a, in a great residential area, a house could, could have four or five people. So when, whether that equates, you know, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are, um, numbers, usually has to do with traffic, but there's, you can, you can calculate numbers of, uh, and, and real census data, um, numbers of persons per unit uh, based on single family. Single family is a little under two and a half per unit. Um, apartments and condos are less. One point six, I think, rings a bell for a condo. But that, that would be across two, maybe three, better, one better. I mean, I, I could try to come up with some sort of calculation.
Okay. I have some other questions, but I can.
No, go ahead. Why don't you just go ahead and finish yours up?
Okay, um, the height variance, um, because we, we don't have the fire chief's input yet. We'll get that later, is that correct?
Well, he, I just say you know that they were a part of the pre-op meeting.
Sure.
And just like, it was a four-story building before, and I think what, um, it, it's, I think it's important for us as we get more developments, you know, to have the ladder trucks. But what they have said, it doesn't prohibit the heights. We've had, we've, actually, there are quite a few four-story and three-story now, um, in Cyo because it, it used to be they didn't have the backup, the, the, um,
Surrounding.
The surrounding areas and stuff like that. So they're very comfortable with these heights and especially because it's fire suppressed. So that's a whole different.
There is where I was going.
Piece.
This would be required, fire suppressed on the taller buildings, right? Okay.
All buildings.
Yeah.
All buildings, even the two-story.
Yeah, now the residential.
Residential.
Yeah, I don't think the townhomes need to be though.
That's where I was.
But we would.
Right. Say that again?
Town, we, townhomes are not required, but that's a simple, um, it's a, it's a lower level of classification than a standard commercial building, but we can still get that.
Uh, one last one that I, that I've been struggling to really get my hair and to analyze about as a development. This is more for the new guys, is, um, it is in an industrial area. You've addressed some of the issues that, that relates to, you're, you're trying to fit in, and I think it, I think it would fit in, except we're talking about families moving into an industrial area, you know. So you've tried to minimize the site lines to the, to the east, and you've tried to, um, concentrate on, on focusing in on the center of the development so, so the families would have a place to, to gather, to play. All these kids are coming, I'm sorry, I'm missing anyone. It does seem like a better acre. Um, I'm just a little concerned that this is so separate from the, from a town or urban area. There's no playgrounds around, there's no stores, there's no, I mean, you have to travel by bus or by car. You couldn't just walk to the corner store because there isn't one. Um, so when you have a dense development like this in a city, I mean, you just walk down the street and you, you've got all sorts of choices. What do we have here? We're not, you're not proposing putting any retail units in, any grocery stores. Uh, the corner grocery store would be really cool for a place like this. You've got hundreds of people. You think somebody would want to do that, but you've, you've chosen to make it a high-density development and, um, and not have any amenities for them to purchase from. Is that reasonable to ask about?
I mean, you could, I mean, I'm, from a marketing standpoint and the number of people, go ahead and, I mean, I think you should.
You've got roughly according to our market analysis, about twenty percent of people would be some sort of families. And those, those could be any number of type of families, you know? Doesn't have to be families with children, could be families without children, but it's, it's just a structure. And we don't think there'll be a huge amount of kids, but there'll be some children here. And this is, this is really up to the individuals as far as, one of the, one of the things that was brought up, of course, is that we're close to Ann Arbor. We're a couple of miles from downtown. My office is on the corner of Ashley and Liberty. It takes me about six minutes to get in my car to drive to the site. There's nothing, that's nothing. And to, from this, and what's happening, you see what's happening out Liberty. Out Liberty, there's developments going on and, and you, Jackson, of course, is full of everything that you could possibly want. If you go east, you hit, uh, Maple and then Stadium, which are both quite busy. So you're not far from any, from, from these sort of activities. Can you, can you walk to them? Probably not, but you could ride a bike to them very easily. And, and from what's going on with the township, the, the trails are, are blooming, shall we say. They're, they're everywhere and there's more work being done as we speak. So, you know, people bring up this idea, you know, if, we, we, we are very confident that we will get the mix that we're looking for. One of the things that, that the master plan talks about is creating housing for a diversity of people. You know, what, what we continually hear is that we wanted the same. This isn't the same. This is something new. This creates a diversity of housing, right? For the retirees, for the, for the different kinds of families that we have structures nowadays. There's all different kinds of different families. And then the millennial, that was just the bulk of the people who would be here. You know, the young professionals, who to them, a few minutes to ride downtown would be a delight, right? You don't have to pay Ann Arbor prices. You get to live in a township. You have green space around you. It's, it's, it's a plus, you know? And that's the market that we're into. But again, we designed this based upon what we read in the master plan as what the township wanted.
And I want to say that you worked on it.
Yep.
When I was part of that, I had in mind that the Jackson Road, Oberley District would be an ideal spot for having multifamily residences. But I pictured it along Jackson Road, and this is an extension off of that, and so it qualifies. But on Jackson Road, you can walk to the corner stores.
Have you walked on Jackson Road? I have too. It's not pleasant.
Well, but if you had, if you had clustered housing like this, um, you'd step back off of there.
I, I respectfully, yeah, I respectfully say to you that that's a very difficult place to do that. It's, it's so active, it's so busy, the traffic moves very quickly. I would much rather have a family in a little place like this, off to the side, or small, you know, than, than on Jackson Road. But, you know, the, the, the Oberley District, one of the things that was talked about was the sewage, the REUs. There's districts for the REUs, and these REUs are only in the areas that have sewer, you know? And we are on the edge. We are end where the sewer is. So the idea that we would use it up and take it away from someone else, there's nothing going on south of us. You go east, you're in Ann Arbor, so it's, it's not like we're taking from someone in the future. That, that, to me, doesn't, it doesn't compute. It doesn't, it doesn't fit into any realm that I understand. So this is on the edge of a number of items. Edge of Ann Arbor, edge of Cyo, edge of the country, because now south of this, it's all going to be, it's, Cyo's bought the development rights. It creates that sort of, and Doug mentioned it, that if you're going to have intense housing, what a good place to have it. Because what else are you going to put here, quite frankly? Oh, by doing this, we can do a lot of the amenities by having this, the number of units that you couldn't normally have and create this attractive community. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to move to Commissioner Shawna. Do you want to?
No, uh.
What do you, okay, and, um, also, I think there are, there's two issues tonight. It'd be nice to have our full planning commission here to, um, you know, with us. But, um, first of all, I, I do want to say that I think there are, you know, some amenities that haven't been mentioned yet, um, outside, and that is, um, you know, Saginaw Forest. And now we have the Rents Farm, um, in which, um, the best regards are going to, you know, work on, um, Project Grow is thinking about maybe doing some community camp hosting there. I think there, there are a lot of really interesting things happening. And, um, and the discussion that we've always had is, you know, reinforcing the real mixed use. And right now, we don't have any residential, you know, in that, you know, it's been sort of an industrial kind of thing. Um, and I think this is, um.
It's east of, wait, we have a lot of residential, Liberty.
Yeah, of Liberty, but, but in this, you know, area.
Not on the corner.
Right, and because it has, I mean, that is like the best biking route into Ann Arbor will be along Liberty. I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it really is a, I mean, think, which. I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it, it really is a, I mean, think, which, you know, what I, so I guess what I'm seeing is um, and you'll see this when we talk about the, the PUD ordinance that we're, we're looking at too. Is trying to encourage the net zero-ready developments. Um, uh, talking about the, the density and where we want higher density. You know, in the sewer water district, so that um, there's less pressure of development out, outside. It also lends itself to be, um trying to balance the affordability, not saying that this is an affordable housing, um, segment, but it'd be nice to, for you to talk a little bit about where you see, you know, the price point of this. Um, and, uh, you know, and then, you know, just, I want to make sure, you know, we're dealing with the net zero. You talked a lot about trash, but you're going to have trash shoots. How are you going to handle recycling? Because I see, you know, the recycling being expanded, um, within the township in the near future. Um, biking, I think we want to reinforce biking and you talked, it looked like in the, there were only, I don't know. It didn't seem like enough biking spaces, but maybe you didn't, it, you know, fully talk about the protected biking, the covered biking. You know, that kind of stuff. So I'd like to see, you know, that being included, because I think we want to reinforce um, definitely the biking and the uh alternative modes of transportation, because if you don't have that with the density, you're just increasing the transportation emission.
Some of the biking would be electric, right?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I think, um, I mean, I feel positive about, um I really like using the podium buildings for, um, the screening, and I think it creates it, it really focuses on the development more towards the Rens Farm. And, you know, the open space in that area, which also includes the fire station. But I, I think the way that you've oriented the development is, is nice and the um, and I do, you know, Shannon, I have a lot of faith in you, that it's the quality of that forty feet that makes all the difference in the world. If you have forty feet and it's lawn, there's no buffer. Um, you have forty feet and you have interest, um, and the rain gardens and, and so forth. The quality of that really makes all the difference in the world. So, um, so I think, to me, that is most important with the setback piece and the variances. Um, the height variance, I think you really can make the, um get the, the buffering of the site and so forth from the more industrial piece and focusing it internally and also towards the farm makes a lot of sense. Um Let's see, oh, one thing I would say with the parking, I know you, you mentioned windows. Um, I know that there's a, you know, you have to have so much air going into the parking structure. Maybe look at some more artistic, uh, metalwork or something like that. Um, and that would add an interest and a, you know, kind of a, they don't all have to be artsy, but you know, a few of them, you know, could, could really.
There's some very nice things that are done that way.
Yeah.
I think they're real attractive.
Yeah, because I think that, it, I don't have any concern along Liberty and Wagner. It's more the internal part of the, the development. Uh, the parking, I think the, um, you know, uh, we are talking about like maximums. You know, parking spaces and trying to do that. I really want to see more detail on the commitment to EV charging. Um, and I think that, you know, um, yeah, so that, you know, we, we really have um, some numbers tied down, um, with that. Yeah, I know you all are working on something. Is there anything that you all have this somewhat firm, or is it still pretty? That's going to be our next step with the ZOA, and we have to plan another meeting for that. But we, you know, by the time, um, we, we are going to have something, I would, it's not going to be
It's just, no, we don't have.
It's going to be at least two months before we even have a draft, I think.
Okay.
On EV?
On EV.
Okay.
Well, our intentions are the townhomes, because we think that though they will lend themselves more readily to it. And of course, in the, in the lower level, the podiums will be set up. And it'll be set up in such a way that we can expand it. There's enough power there so you can expand it. So if there's other, other demand.
And then you have to figure out the garden apartments. So, so the garden, so, I, I think, I think you have a strategy for the townhomes. Yep, you got garages. You know, the, you have the garages, you can provide a certain amount with the podiums. You, you need the strategy for the, the other, the other one.
Two garden courts along Liberty have an underground garage.
Okay, those two.
What we're looking at is community building and the other three garden courts, providing adequate coverage for them.
Right, right. And I think we're, we're probably going to model it similarly to the re- the one, how they're revising in Ann Arbor. So, that would be a good, okay, stay up. And then I think the recycling is going to be really important. It'd be so cool if they did the composting right next door. Think about that. Um Yeah, so, um, do you want to talk, talk a little bit about the landscape maturity and, you know, and the timing on that? And, you know, how you could, with sizing and so forth, how, how that works.
Right.
Um, I would say you're going to feel a difference for sure in five years, but in terms of it really blocking the second story, I'd say it's probably ten. Just to be real.
How about your grasses and, and your
Oh, those pop up pretty, like, what, in terms of the shrubs and, and all the rain gardens and stuff, that's, that's, that's faster. I'd say
Almost immediate.
I'd say, yeah, I'd say by two years, all of the rain garden stuff is really filled in. Um, the shrubs, you know, take time to, I'd say that's probably three years before it's really looking more mature. Um, but you all have, you know, I mean, I, I love it when you guys have regulations where I have to landscape. Because I usually have to talk people into it. So, like, yeah, you found a different place, it's great. But I think, you know, critical to the, the setback variance is the quality of, of the landscape and the size of, you know, so if you can get a little larger trees to begin with, um, you know, especially since the intent there is the buffer. So, does that make some sense?
Yeah.
And just one other thing with that is that the one side on, along Liberty, we have the rain garden too. So you kind of get a twofer there, because we have to do the, the buffering piece in terms of your right-of-way. But then you also have the rain garden there too. So in that area where we can, because there's no utilities in that zone. Further to the west, there's a lot of utilities and we can't do a rain garden in that area, unfortunately. Um
Down in front of Podium One.
In front of the Podium One at the corner, we can, it, it's really going to be like quite rich into that area. Yeah. And then it's Sally, are you still there? I have a, a, a kind of a follow-up question on the REU piece.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're clear that there, there are two different districts for REUs. There's the Liberty section, and then there's the, the Jackson section. And those don't share REUs, right? They're, the, the contract is written for one and the other, or do they share?
They do, excuse me, they do share. Um, the contract that was written with Ann Arbor originally had them separated. But over the years, Ann Arbor no longer cares. It all goes to the same plant. So as long as there's pipe capacity, there is, the two districts are now pretty much lumped together. Um, so as of our, I can give you a little more detail. As of our study last fall that we did, there's just over thirty-three hundred REUs remaining in the entire contract.
You say thirty-three, thirty-three hundred?
Thirty-three hundred. So that was based on sewer metering flow data. So that's real flows, that's what's, but like, what is flowing through the pipes today. Since then, the board has approved about thirty new REUs for new projects. Um, in addition, the developments under construction, so Trailwood, Syle View, Fox Hyundai, Guardian Tree. A lot of those you've seen account for another chunk of it. And then the developments in queue with substantial REU requests pending are Woodview Commons, which is just shy of six hundred. And then this project at one eighty. If you take all of that into account, you end up with just under nineteen hundred REUs remaining. Even after this is approved. Um, so we just ran those numbers today, because, um, Donna Palmer had asked for that for the Woodview Commons thing. So I thought I would give you the rundown as well. Um, so even after this, and all of the other large developments are built out, which will take many more years. This Trailwood, Syle View, um, Woodview Commons are all still under construction. By the time the township actually sees those flows, we're probably talking five years down the road at least before we get to this point. So contractually, the township is in excellent shape, I would say, at nineteen hundred remaining, even after all of these large developments are built. Um, there are some capacity issues at Jackson Road Pump Station that are being monitored as these developments come online and continue to build out. Steve is well aware of those. Um, we're helping him monitor when those upgrades need to be performed. And I know a number of the PUD developments in the township have promised money to that upgrade already. So that is in the works, being monitored. But in terms of contracts, you're good to go. The pump station will be addressed when it needs to be addressed, and, um, I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions you have on all of that. I know that was a lot of information right there.
Oh, that, that's, that's, that's helpful. And, um, in this area, the, the pump stations and so forth are okay?
Everything here flows up all the way to the Jackson Road Pump Station. Um, so there's a Liberty Pump Station that services mostly the southeast corner of the township. That would be the WISD District, as we call it. Um, also the uplands. And then everything else flows through Jackson Road. So even though this is in the corner of the southeast township, this actually follows all the way up to the pump station at Zee Road and Jackson.
Right, that's helpful. Thank you.
Of course.
Shannon, give Randall.
We have this open common area that's going to be water infiltration. Does it stay moist or does it get really dry? Is it a hard thing to grow grass on, or is it? If you're trying to get the water to flow underground.
It's a, it's a great question. It's actually going to be quite low. By the time, um, they collect all the other water besides the ones that are going in the rain garden, it's going to be
It's roughly ten feet below grade.
And then it goes down from there.
Yeah.
So in other words, there's a good, healthy chunk of soil buffering between. But you're absolutely right. It's like, really, and if you think about it, like a big septic field, right? And it is, can be hard to kind of grow, it can be really dry. But because there's such a big buffer in between, I don't anticipate that it's going to be an issue. It is sandy soils in general. So that's part of what you, you get the good stuff from it, which is excellent infiltration, but it also gets drier. So that's part of our job is to figure out like what grows well in these soils, and that's, that's part of it.
If you take a look at Knife Your Own Home, back where this underground system's going, they water that now, and that is plush and green as it is, and that's all sand right underneath there, so I don't think we're going to end up with too much issues. Yeah, 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 they're, they're kind of slowly watering.
Right, that's right. We haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet.
We didn't save somewhere water.
Right, exactly. And those, 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 those grasses that went to dry out, that's called prairie. Yeah, right, exactly, that's right. Yeah, you have another, you have a
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what are the podium flats going for? Realize you have different.
Well, there's, there's several different sizes and, uh, Rob, you, I think you know the sizes on those, I don't have the floor plans on there.
The smallest one was seven fifty, um, uh
Well, the smallest one was, it's six hundred with the new, with the new
Well, it's done. Right, um, but as presently designed, could drop down to six hundred based on the market study. The middle two bedrooms about twelve hundred square feet, and the largest, the two, three bedroom, um, which are very, which are limited, and are about two thousand square feet.
So, so seven hundred dollars a month, what's the middle?
The six, the six hundred square foot units.
Square feet, that dollars.
Six hundred square foot.
No, I'm asking, what does the rental fee?
The rental will be somewhere between, the, the average we're looking at now is two dollars and five cents a square foot, up to about two forty.
Okay, I don't want to have to calculate it.
Well, we, we don't, we don't
For your smallest unit.
And we don't, we don't know.
Okay, well, that's my answer.
So, we're saying that that's, that's, right now, all we do is projections of so much square foot. But we really don't, what we're trying to do, it, it depends so much on the cost of what we're doing here. Right? I mean, the more difficult and more expensive it becomes, then, and that's something I, I developed in Ann Arbor for years. I didn't understand that. Because they kept laying stuff on it. I says, if you do that, you have to charge more for the units. Then they complain it's too expensive, but then they keep throwing stuff on it. So there has to be some sort of, and I'm what, we're willing to work with the township. We want to. We want to create something that's of value, that's, I, I know that master plan probably as good as people wrote it at this stage, because I've thought about it. I've read it a lot. And so the idea of how much, you want to, you want to charge as little as you have to and as much as you can to be able to make the project viable. So let's say you've got a six hundred square foot unit. If my other project in Ann Arbor, this six eighteen South Main, they're charging five dollars a square foot. That's three thousand dollars for a six hundred square foot unit. We're hoping that we can charge around two twenty, maybe, for a six hundred square foot unit. So you'd be at the fourteen hundred dollar a month range, twelve hundred, in that range for this market. So that's
For smaller units.
For a small unit. And that's, that's, that's an estimate. And, but we don't know yet, all right? We do projections, right, at this stage. We're at a concept stage, like Rob's, our models. There, you know, there's no color in it, there's some
I find it hard to believe that you would not project how much money you could make on the project, so, but, okay, I'll take it.
You know what you look at? You look at what it costs to finance a project. And it's, it's not a matter, it's, it's, it's a matter of what you make, but you have to be able to finance it, paying such a lot of money on it. People have to invest in it. These things just don't happen. So all of these things have to fit together.
I was, I understand exactly what you're talking about. I understand the variables involved that you just mentioned. But I've asked other developers and they usually give me a, a roundabout, like, for these units to be around this figure. For these townhouses, it'll be around for this figure. And you're saying to me, you have no idea.
I do have an idea. I'm saying it's between two oh five and two forty a square foot, depending on how structured. Once we get past this conceptual stage, into the design of the final site plan, then we start looking at all this, because we bring in contractors to work with the architects, to design the units. We're looking at, one of the things that are, that's sort of interesting about the, about these garden courts, they're all the same. The same thing with the podium, they're all the same. So we're talking to a modular builder who could build these in his factory and bring them here. They're, in some ways, they're built better. Can we save money on that? Very possible, but we don't know that. We don't know that till we get to the next stage, and the architect really starts working with the builder, and we start seeing real numbers. And we don't know what's going on with the building right now. I mean, lumber was, what, two hundred percent over what it was a year before? It's dropped down now, but we don't know. So you, it's not going to be invasive. We, the market is changing so much. And so we have to pay attention to it. And we're trying to do a lot here. Okay, we're trying to do a lot. We're doing a lot more than most, most people would, quite frankly.
And that would be the, the same for the garden court to the townhouses. You don't know how much those rentals would be.
No, no, we can, we can guess, but, uh, it, it becomes a composite, because everything, those lower level, uh, for parking that we're doing below the podium buildings, those are very expensive. But what they do is they help create all that green space, because we, we pull the parking out from, out, out from the site underneath these buildings. Same with underneath Garden One and Garden Two, there's underground parking. That's not parking on the site. If you go to most apartments, it's almost all surface parking. It's all asphalt or concrete. Right? You don't, usually don't see this sort of green space. You just don't.
I, I just kind of wanted to ask that, and I just have one other, you said it was forty-one percent, you had these figures of forty-one percent seven percent for townhouses, and your pent houses were five percent, I'm not sure. What was that rundown of yours?
I think what, what I was mentioning was the, uh, at forty-one percent of one-bedroom, one-bath units. And they're from six hundred square feet to seven fifty. And then we had forty-six percent of these are two-bedroom, two-bath. And those are, these were Rob was mentioning, from a thousand fifty to eleven fifty square feet. And then we have the townhomes, which are, there's sixteen of them, eight of them are And then we have the townhomes, which are, there's sixteen of them. Eight of them are fourteen hundred square feet and eight of them are uh, eighteen hundred square feet. So they go between two bedrooms and three bedrooms. I think the fourteens are three bedrooms too, aren't they? Yeah, they're just, the eighteens are just more gracious. And then we have a small number of these penthouse units, which fits into that empty nester retirees. This relates to the sixty eight percent of millennials, twenty one percent for traditional, non-traditional families, and eleven percent for empty nesters retirees. The mix, the people that we say are, want to live here, according to our studies, and the, the mix that we have correspond to each other. So we're building into what we think the market is. So, and one of the things that says in the master plan is this idea of having places for retirees. Right? And on the edge of Ann Arbor, Syle Church, it's a great location, you know? So.
So I just wanted to have a comment to make. Um, um, this is a big project. I agree with Doug. Um, I think tonight, I'm not prepared to approve preliminary PUD. I think um, despite the fact that some of our members are not here, um, um, I just think there's a lot of things to consider. Um, I would make a motion right now to table this project.
Yeah, I think you have the
Sure. You want me to use that format? Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, from the, the first paragraph or the second paragraph?
Second.
Second, okay. Based upon the information received by the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the
You just have to do the, where it says or down below.
Or move to table?
Yeah, and move to table.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's my thought, but, okay, um, move to table the preliminary PUD proposal, crosswords preliminary PUD, allow the applicant time and the planning commission more time uh, to review the project.
Okay, and do you want to say that based on the concerns noted in the planners and engineers report?
Sure. Based on concerns outlined in the planners' report dated six seventeen twenty twenty two and the engineers' uh, report dated six twenty 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 two.
All right. Okay, so we have a, a motion to table and support from Mitch or Hyde for their discussion.
Um, do we have, should we list down the things that we want the, them to come back with later on? I mean, do you want to define those?
I think, yeah, with the planners, do we want to add? I think I, um, Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be good. And, and so I think, um,
Excellent. Um, yeah, we talked a lot of things, but I want to make sure, you know, what to take back with that.
So I think we've got a, a pretty good handle on the REUs. Okay, so that comes back. I think it's um, a clarification on sort of the bikes, the recycling. Um, it'll, it will have a, and I think the detail of the landscape plan is in the, you know, is the final site plan. Um, with the bike thing, there's also the sort of the bike maintenance. When you're in an apartment, you don't have, you know, a workshop or things like that. So there might be, you know, a component there. Um,
Cap of study?
Uh, that won't be until final.
The density discussion?
Yeah, and that's something we, we need to, and, and I think we're gonna have some more discussion on that tonight, but also having the other commissioners here, just because, I, you know, I feel like because this is, you, you, you know, I think it is an important decision about the density and I, I want to make sure that people have the time to really consider it. Cause this is the first time they've really seen something that has this kind of density to it. So, um, I think it's, it's more, you know, consideration and some discussion and some thought um, on the, of planning commissioners piece. And then, so, and, cause the variances are, you know, the parking, the heights, the um, setbacks. Um, and so it's, and then density piece.
There's some discussion about um, maybe they have a more formal letter from the fire chief regarding the height and the possible need for ladder trucks.
Okay.
That might be a public benefit if, if you chose to contribute towards it.
Okay, so we're gonna see bike, recycling, fire.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think a member of the public mentioned something that is worth repeating and that is um, I think it was probably losing track of the working traffic that specifically talked about um, things they were going to do for the township in the contribution of our department. Service district, you've mentioned that. I know you mentioned that somewhere in there. But maybe, I know it's preliminary, they don't need the, the integrated details till the final PUD, but maybe there's a little little more um, those.
Do you want more detail, is that what you're saying? Because there's a number of them that are listed in that public benefit. We didn't know that you wanted detail on those sort of things. We thought that would come in as we go through the final site plan. Those things would be worked out.
Yeah, I think that is, in my opinion, there should be a little, doesn't have to be the final detail, a little more prominence to those ideas.
Prominence?
Yes.
So we have, um, just some feedback from um, fire, the bike, recycling, um, the density, and that's more of an internal kind of fuck kind of piece. And then the public benefit. That.
So I think, if, if I could just say something, um,
Yeah.
One of our citizens brought it up, um, the I think there was a concern about the density not speaking to the character of the area. And I think this is not so much about your particular project or, but I think overall, there's a debate within the township about the future growth of the township. We don't view ourselves as a bedroom community for Ann Arbor. Um, but I get it. We're all so close together. I mean, I, I used to have a law firm downtown Ann Arbor for a long time. So I loved the fact that I only had to drive six and a half miles to work. Um, but I think there is a, a valid debate between, you know, how much development and what the development brings. Because not only does development happen of a sp- particular project, a specific project, it also may bring bigger roads and more of this and more of that. Now, that may not be so inherent in the project that we're talking about tonight. But I do think that there's um, a debate going on within our community about the character of Syle Township. Its rural slash urban nature and, and where it begins and where it ends and how much is too much and all that. So that's why you hear some of the comments you heard from the public, as well as myself sometimes. Um, and so, um, I just wanted to say that because a lot of times, I just wanted to say it because it's lingering out there in the air. And I just felt like it needed to be said at the meeting. Um, because I think it's not just the development of the particular project, but also the develop, what that development brings to the area. A continued development of the area that's a concern. Thank you.
All right, any other, uh, yes?
Uh, yeah, so uh, we talked a lot of great things today. Um, I, I don't know if we touched on, on uh, what can environmental uh, uh, best practices you'd follow in this whole project? Since you are essentially going to be the renters, people are not going to uh, install their own equipment or their washing machines or whatever, uh, how can you drive towards more higher standards of environmental uh, best practices in the construction of this entire project? Uh,
Well, we've already started it. I mean, all infiltration, all that sort of suggests you that we're, that our attention is being placed on these things. When the architect designed this, he'll design these things to, for one, all your, all your appliances and all that will be, what are they called, Rob?
Energy, sir.
Energy.
Right, right. So, uh,
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, no, that's one of the things I
And, and you, you use, you use materials that are, you know, as, as viable as you can. That's right.
Right.
Where you get them from and how you do it. I mean, there's, all of those are best practices and those are practiced by the architect. Any contractor we hire will practice best practices. It's the nature of the game nowadays. It, it has to be done. And so.
So perhaps, I mean, that's something you can kind of elaborate to us in some detail uh, when we meet again. I mean, with clear definition that we go forward with, because, I mean, that's an important thing going forward, almost doing everything we do here in Syle and beyond. And uh, we talked early on about the water recycling and such, to the building and all the great things. We're gonna begin another discussion, which entreat me, of course. I can bring this up earlier potentially. But uh, as we went through the whole cycle of discussion here, uh, this is one area which, which is quite obvious. You said, like you said, smart, whatever. Uh, I mean, uh, how can we define those things going forward in some form or fashion, to the best of your capacity?
Rob, you want to try and answer this?
I, you don't have to. I think it takes a lot more thought and discussion with that.
Right, right. You don't have, you can add no, no, no problem.
Yeah, so, okay, we'll add the environmental best practice, more details. And then gets into the biking, recycling, the EV charging and, and some of the construction, you know, maybe the building performance standards that you're looking at, your targets, your UI targets, whatever that could be. So, okay, so we have a motion.
Those changes I just
So we have, okay, so we have fire, bike, recycling, density, public benefits, and just overall environmental best practices, which includes the EV charging piece. Okay. Right.
Um, so you'll go?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So it's tabled and uh, thank you. That was a good uh, presentation and I think we're looking, you know, forward to, you know, getting a little more detail. And also that'll give us some time to, you know, uh, kind of think things through and also engage the other commissioners who aren't here.
Do you have an idea when you're tabling it too?
Um, I think you can, you can, I mean, it could be, so that's, it, well, you have to sub, you might want to submit some information and then we'll put it on the, the agenda.
Can you usually say like the next available? When you guys are ready, we'll try.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so um, the next item on our agenda is um, the public hearing for OA two two zero zero four Ann Arbor Arms rezoning I one to C four. And um, I'm gonna open that public hearing at nine forty eight. And we'll follow the same uh, sort of process, the applicant, um, our consultants, and then the public, those who are here and those who are um, online. So please go ahead and introduce yourselves and
All right, Tim Lang. I'm the director of Rage Retail um, operations over at Ann Arbor Arms. And I don't have as elaborate of a presentation as they have. And I think a lot of that speaks to it because the facility is already built, the space is already built. Um, we've had in mind Oh, she has the
Forgot the presentation.
She has
You could have gave it to me then, sorry.
Oh, there you go.
Oh. Ask you a quick question while waiting?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is this where you're looking at the building back here?
Yes, this is currently already built.
Now, this is your building?
Yes.
Right? And where are you looking?
So the current structure is already built and it's already been approved.
To go in right in here?
Yeah, but it currently is there.
Okay. You got it, you get, you got it built before you came to the planning commission?
Pretty cool.
That's confidence.
Uh, okay, so originally, the pavilion area was gonna be more of a sound barrier area, sort of a area between Ann Arbor Arms and the pickleball, Wolverine pickleball that's going up in the, just north of this. Um, we've been able to have a few events at that space, um, from our internal events with members and employees. And it seems to be rather popular. And one of the things we want to be able to do is be able to rent the facility out, um, catering food. Um, and the I, so basically, the I one restricts us from the ability to rent the space out. So we're seeking to be zoned as C four so that we can be able to rent the space out, bring in some caterers who will have their own liquor license um, and be able to use that space more effectively.
Do you want to say something, Doug?
Okay, thank you. So uh, yeah, this is for um, really a use expansion of the existing pavilion that now exist, you know, that's now at Ann Arbor Arms. Um, as the applicant mentioned, uh, this was originally approved by the township as really a necessary space for the employees and customers of Ann Arbor Arms. Um, specifically, not, you know, uh, it was approved with the understanding from the owner that this would not be rented out to others, that it was, that it was supposed to be uh, really just a break area for employees and a place that they could have, like, customer appreciation events and things like that. So we looked at it as an accessory to Ann Arbor Arms. And it's a, you know, it's a patio with a canopy and a fire pit. Um, and I'm simplifying a little bit, but that's basically what it is. Uh, as was mentioned by the applicant, I think they determined that this was a, uh, this was, had the potential to be very popular. And um, wanted to be able to uh, rent the space out to people that work, simply customers of Ann Arbor Arms or the employees of Ann Arbor Arms. So to do that, uh, they need a rezoning. Cause as was mentioned, the I one zoning does not allow uh, those types of uses. But the C four zoning would. And the problem with uh, C four zoning is that it allows um, a whole lot of things that might not be appropriate in this location. Uh, including things like sideboards and outdoor storage of lawn equip, you know, lawn equipment sales and things like that. C four is our most intensive commercial designation, but it's also the designation that allows um, banquet halls and meeting facilities, which this would become a meeting facility or, and or um, quote unquote, a banquet facility. So um, they're requesting a rezoning, but to try to avoid the idea that they could do all of the things permitted in the C four district, they are proposing this as a conditional rezoning, which is a uh, tool that was introduced into zoning probably about ten or fifteen years, about fifteen years ago or so, that allows a property owner to voluntarily restrict themselves to uh, various uses and uh, that, that, you know, that they would want to have in here. So that's what the applicant is doing. They're restricting themselves, taking out some of the more intrusive things that might occur on the site. And even just the things that they might uh, want to have, happen on the site. Um, this is the same kind of process, by the way, that the pickleball court approved because they have a similar, similar facility. because they have a similar, similar facility with indoor and outdoor commercial recreation. And all of those uses that the pickleball court wanted to do could only be done in C-4. So you might remember that the pickleball also was approved as a conditional rezoning to C-4. So in effect, they will be asking for something similar that occurred to the property to the north. The applicant has provided the following conditions related to the C-4 property. They have listed the things that would be allowed on page two of our report. Indoor operation, outdoor commercial recreation. They left indoor theater, but I can't imagine some indoor theater. Large scale retail establishment, there's simply not enough room for that. And that the conditional use banquet halls is what they need to standard restaurants or alcohol. Really not enough room for a standard restaurant either in this location. We look at, so this is, this is a rezoning, so we have to look at all the surrounding properties. Surrounding properties in this particular case, for the most part, are zone I-1, limited industrial. And we just mentioned that the pickleball facility in the north was recently resold to C-4. So this would actually not be two properties on C-4 adjacent to one another. And we indicate that due to the location of the adjacent pickleball facility, it's proximally near I-94. Fact that there's no residential land uses anywhere within this area, we think that this use will be compatible with the surrounding area. The master plan does not support a C-4 zoning, quite a classification in and of itself. However, the master plan does talk about mixed uses within this area. The, uh, the, uh, the range itself, as well as the surrounding properties. And pickleball, there's certainly a mixed use character to this area. So we indicate that the subject condition for rezoning of I-1, limited industrial, C-4 capacity does not specifically coincide with the township master plan, doesn't mention for industrial. However, I think we have to recognize that, that the master plan does recognize the mixed use character of this part of the township. And we are promoting mixed uses generally speaking up and down the corridor. If you've been to the site, you'll notice that there's no lifting features on site. There's no steep slopes, woodlands, boughs that are. And if you've been to the site also, you know that this facility is already there. So what they want to do is already locate another area. We like to look at the development potential of what could happen if the property is rezoned. And we indicate some of the potential uses that could occur here if it was rezoned based on, the whole property is rezoned C-4 based on these conditions. And we list some of those permitted uses and conditional uses that could occur here if the property was rezoned, with the conditions placed upon it as the applicant addresses. We indicate that traffic will be addressed separately. And one thing I didn't mention is that this property will also require a conditional use approval. So this is really kind of step one is the rezoning. Because banquet facilities are a conditional use in the C-4 zoning district. So this rezoning will not, in and of itself, allow, what the applicant wants to do, they have to come back with similar to what the pickleball posted. And comebacks, we'll get in much more detail with the use and some of these questions when this comes back as the commission. This property is within the township's sewer water district. However, we don't anticipate additional facilities being needed as this is a permanent outdoor facility. I believe that, I can clarify this, but there's no bathroom facilities that they're using in Ann Arbor Arms facility or bathrooms. So there's no additional RUs or sanitary surfaces. There are a series of the rezoning criteria that, uh, that we're supposed to look at. And our findings in fact here is that the five criteria for rezoning have been reviewed and we found that they are not be applicable to the subject rezoning or rezoning. So our recommendation in this case is based on the comments in this analysis to recommend approval of post-conditional rezoning from I-1, limited industrial to C-4, not a commercial, amid some uses of the applicant. The applicant would like to maintain on this property. And it's, the findings in fact, that could simply be referenced if the planning commission agrees with them as part of your motion for this project. So we are, we are recommending approval of the project. This, by the way, won't affect the Ann Arbor Arms site. It will be rezoned C-4, but it will be, it will continue to be operating as is. The Ann Arbor Arms site was allowed in the I-1 zoning district as an indoor commercial recreation facility as well as a retail facility. And that would be just maintained, C-4 allows the same thing. So rezoned to C-4 allows the Ann Arbor Arms facility to keep maintaining or keep operating exactly as it is. All it really does in the short term is allow this outdoor meeting space to be able to be considered at a later date by the planning commission. So that is our report recommendation. If you have any questions, you have to answer any questions at the planning commission.
Great. Any specific questions for Doug before we?
Oh, my questions for Doug. I'd just say that I, I find it interesting, the use of our approval of the pickleball project, outdoor event stuff, comparison here for this project. But I do have a question for Mr. Lang. So, um, as I understand it, the Ann Arbor Arms is a facility where you sell guns? You have target practice on your facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
And ammunition, et cetera?
Yes, my.
Okay. And in your idea of this event space, I'm using your words, are you expecting that people are going to have, be wearing guns?
No, I mean, that would not be the exception, especially if somebody were to follow the, you know, the concealed carry guidelines. That would be, that would not be within our control. It would be in a gun-free zone. Should there be alcohol involved?
What you are talking about, I thought I saw that you weren't recommending, you are saying.
We do want to have the ability to. Should that be a, you know, a specific request of a patron? But, um, like, we stand by 100% responsibility and we want to actually, especially in this day and age, take it a step further and be over responsible and be the place that people can look to for answers for how to get through the complexities that we find ourselves in. And so responsibility is our number one mission. Education and responsibility of firearms owners is absolutely paramount. So to recommend or suggest or to allow knowledge of, you know, alcohol on a premise at the same time as firearms would just absolutely be unethical.
So I would just, I just have a comment. I mean, I'm all about guns, I'm in front of the guns. I own two guns, of which I bought from your establishment. And I also have a CPL, so I'm not against guns. I am against guns and alcohol. And I also am concerned about expanding the use because the facility, the main facility is a gun enterprise. And I don't, you know, I don't see this as the same as the pickleball. I mean, we can do, you know, I mean, there's sportsmanship and gun ownership as well. But I, I just see this as a opening up a door that I'm not comfortable with as a planning commissioner. And so for that reason, I'm going to support.
Yeah, well, I want to make sure we get all the way through the public comment too.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, this is Ken Moore speaking. I don't have a lot of questions, I mean, I kind of get what you're trying to do. But I'm just saying that this is not something that I would support, opening up the door because of the, because of my remarks earlier. And I do not see it the same as the pickleball use, outside door use with courts playing pickleball. So anyway, that's just my two cents. There's nothing personal, just.
No.
And a lot of concerns about mixing those two.
I do want to be clear, only in the fact that that is not of our, it's not our idea to mix by any means. Our original idea of having a members lounge area that could exceed out for barbecues and for when we bring vendors in and have big events, that's expanded to a point where we would like to, outside of Ann Arbor Arms, outside of the general public or membership base, we would like to, if, if somebody wanted to come in and use our facility, have nothing to do with Ann Arbor Arms. That's why it's the pavilion and has zero, you know, shares property and that's it. That is our, that is our view of this. And so we're not, we're definitely not trying to mix those things. We're actually trying to get away from that and be able to use that space for something outside of firearms, outside of what Ann Arbor Arms.
But you see, once we give you the conditional use, you can use it all you want to, long as it's in lawful use, meaning within the conditional use. So I understand what you're remembering.
And slightly, before you open up the.
Yeah, go ahead.
If it was construed by Commissioner Moore that I said it was the same, what I meant to say, what I thought I said is that they went through the same process. It wasn't the same thing.
Okay.
The pickleball folks went through conditional rezoning to C-4 to allow some uses they couldn't normally do under I-1. They're doing the same thing. They're proposing a use to C-4 to allow a use, in this case, a banquet facility or meeting facility that they couldn't do under their current zoning.
I understand.
That they were the same.
I got you, thank you, sir.
Okay. And things like capacity, impact of parking, hours of operation, all of that is, it, it, once you get through to, when you look at the conditional use.
That would be addressing the conditional use section. So it's very, the terminology, they didn't do a real good job. When they came up with this legislation that said you could do conditional rezoning, so that sounds like conditional use, two totally separate nights. Just think of it right now, we're just talking about the rezoning, the C-4. Rezoning does not grant you any use of the property yet. It just, it's just the zoning. And then the applicant, once they get the zoning, they will have to then apply for a conditional use approval. And as you said, at that point, they'll have to submit a site plan like they did today. But then we talked about things like parking and how many people are going to be at the banquet facility and, or the hours of operation and.
And, and so doing all, what they're doing, as long as it was membership-based, that is fine.
We approved it, approved.
So those things, it, it, so what, what's different about this is being able to rent the pavilion to, uh, outside.
Yeah, to others. And I, and I, you know, I've talked to the owner and I know that his desire is to be able to open up the space to people who are direct customers of or employees of Ann Arbor Arms. Just have a space to have, you know, a, it's a wedding.
Events.
Yeah. Because that opens up, that opens up a lot of questions that we really can't get into. So I want to think like how you handle sewage disposal, what do you handle? Noise attenuation, you know, all, all this. Right now, we're just talking about the zoning part. With conditions, with the conditions that they have tried to place on themselves. And just to be clear also, the planning commission and township board cannot place additional conditions. It's, it's, what you see is what you get at this stage.
What we approve is what we.
Yeah, this is, this, you either accept that with these conditions or we don't accept that with those conditions. This is one of those oddities where we cannot add on.
Can we ask them to restrict more?
No. So if they, even if they agree, if they agree, yes.
Okay, yeah.
But then they would have to come back with an amended application somewhere.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and so, but, so this is just looking at A, B, C, and D. And then the next process is looking at the capacity, the hours of the events, all of that, more detail.
If we approve it tonight, the conditional rezoning, that's what they're going to work with. So we need to get it right.
Well, no, but they have to come back for the conditional use, which is all of those other things, which are discretionary.
So it's a rezoning. In a rezoning, we do not restrict, although they're restricting themselves to certain uses. So we would be, we would be agreeing with the uses of their proposal.
Like I said, if we had something that we wanted different and we discussed it and they agreed, then they'd have to come back. They'd have to come back and, but if we didn't do that, then they could go forward, as they've stated. So we, we want to be clear, if we have any issues that we covered in tonight.
Uh, and the type of, type of things they can do.
The conditional use.
So, well, yeah. The big use is not the, how it's going to operate.
More details about.
Just the broad use listed in the, yeah. Yep.
I have a question for Doug. On page two of your memo, the permitted uses allowed, the conditional uses allowed?
Yes.
Those are the, the areas that the applicant has expressed to you that they're interested in?
Yes. Can you state it on page eight?
All right. Any other clarifying questions? Because I want to give the public a chance to weigh in.
Page two.
Okay, then is there anyone here that wants to, of the public? Doug, did you want to say anything? You're good? Okay, we'll go online then.
Okay, so we have one hand up. It's Kathleen Brand. Ms. Brand, I clicked the button and I believe you now have the floor, just unmute yourself.
Hi, it's Kathleen Brand again. Mr. Wong stated that this does not comply with the master plan. I see absolutely no rationale for allowing this change in zoning. And then let's get into the other problems with this plan. But if you change the zoning right now, you, I don't understand why you would do it. It does not comply with the master plan. It should comply with the master plan. Okay, then also, I, as well as Commissioner Moore, object strongly to alcohol consumption around people carrying weapons. I think that's foolish. It's, it's actually more than foolish. It's completely dangerous, aside from what the gentleman says. It seems to me SiO Township has a huge gap in any regulations regarding firearms. So anyone can carry firearms with whatever other regulations are in place. I think this is something SiO Township should address. And the applicant, applicant also talked about responsibility, that they want to be very responsible for their gun owners and educate them. With side by responsibility, this property was originally approved for employees and customers. That's what the commission approved this for. And for the record, a SiO Township resident highlighted to the planner that this, these people were already advertising events. They had a complete layout of events, what would be allowed, catering. So they broke the original agreement with no, with no consideration for responsibility. So I, this was, this applicant has not shown responsibility to SiO Township. this was, this applicant has not shown responsibility to Sciop Township, to Sciop Township residents. I can't trust that, uh, something would not happen in this property with alcohol and guns. And I, they broke their agreement and that does not, uh, bode well for a responsible party. Um, it has nothing to do with pickleball, right? So if you are drinking, you're having, you're playing pickleball, there's not the chance that you could kill somebody. I'm sorry, but in this country, guns have more rights than people and guns have more rights than women in this country now. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if there's anyone else.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Yeah, oh, keep going through the public. Um, Mr. Jonathan Greenberg, I am clicking the button. Uh, Mr. Greenberg, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I too am a Sciop resident who owns guns and worked as an NRA certified instructor. Um, I have enjoyed shooting my whole life. Uh, went through, um, many adventures, uh, learning how to, you know, shoot properly. I, I've never shot anything other than paper, um, never intend to. Um, but in my world, there were, um, there's two extremes that you have to consider. One is the risk and one is the impact. And what I mean by that is that when you want to look at what kind of precautions you want to take to avoid something happening, whether it's an engineer or with guns, you look at the potential of it happening. That's the risk. And there are some events that are very risky and there are some events that are, are very, very, very extremely unlikely. But then when you start looking at the cost of those events, the events that are, uh, very unlikely to occur, they tend to be super high value. And so as you start looking across the spectrum of outcomes and doing your risk analysis, you have to be able to, uh, leave room for both of those factors. In fact, multiplying them together gives you an overall score that helps quantify the risk you're taking. I'm saying this all in kind of a long form of saying, yeah, the chances of someone mixing alcohol and weapons here is pretty small. But, and I think, and, and when I heard that described earlier, this is a thought that I, that came to my mind, um, the actor who recently shot someone on set, um, because of the fact that there were both blanks and real ammunition lying around the set. Again, something that, you know, with all the sets out there, something very, very probably common and happens very, very seldomly, but someone lost their lives and another person was injured. So as we think about this particular situation, I want to avoid the thought that, oh, the chances of anyone mixing alcohol and weapons is small. Because the potential outcome of that happening, where the two things are in close proximity to each other, is a possibility and is a very drastic one that has, uh, unbelievable, uh, cost to the community. Um, and, you know, the proprietors themselves. So, uh, I just wanted to share that perspective, uh, from my point of view.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pattinson, uh, Mr. Pattinson, I'm clicking the button. You now have the floor.
Thank you. Ann Arbor Arms is a, has, uh, developed a great gun store and gun range in Ann Arbor. And they've, they're in a real niche market in terms of, um, gun stores in and around the Ann Arbor area. There aren't very many. And it seems to me the instant they allow alcohol on the property, I can't imagine how they'll be able to get insurance. And that's what mystifies me about this proposal, is that insurance alone, it seems to me, would prohibit this idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
There, there are no other hands up from the public.
Okay. Make sure. You're sure? Okay. Great. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
By Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hei. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, do we close the public hearing at 10:20? Yeah, can continue with some discussion and deliberation. It will, it can be, uh, a table, um, uh, an approval, disapproval. So, all the motions are there. Um, thoughts?
Question. Thank you. Uh, the, the public comments, the first was talk about some kind of agreement when Ann Arbor Arms created employees and employers. I understand that. Was that some kind of condition which you was talking about, what this premises is supposed to be used for?
Yeah, now, did you want to deal with that? It has to do with it being an accessory. So go ahead and, and talk about what is permitted currently.
Yeah, about, about a year or so ago, maybe a year and a half ago, um, yeah, I think it's probably during COVID, the applicant wanted to develop a kind of patio that could be used for employees and for the customers of Ann Arbor Arms for, you know, customer appreciation events and employee lounge, things like that. And so, uh, we approved that, um, the township approved that administratively as an accessory to Ann Arbor Arms. Uh, with this, with the specific condition that, uh, they were not going to rent it out to outside groups. Specifically had to do with Ann Arbor Arms as a business for their customers and employees. That's it. Um, and the applicant, uh, desires to do more than that. They want to be able to rent that space out. Um, one of the other folks that spoke, I think it was Ms. Brand, indicated that, um, I was made aware that the applicant had developed a website to promote, uh, renting out this space, which is true. Um, uh, one of the township residents made me aware of that and that kind of got the ball rolling to get them to this point. Um, I don't know that they ever actually used it yet, uh, for rental. But, uh, there was, it was a true statement that there was a desire from the applicant to rent it out and we kind of caught that, kind of kicked that butt and got him here in front of the public.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hei.
Just as a follow-up to that question, um, I, I believe this was the prior, um, planning commission that approved this, and probably four, five years after that.
Administered.
The, the pavilion used for, no, that was just, that was administered. Oh, administered, yeah, okay. Was alcohol mentioned in there? I, I don't remember. I don't, I don't, okay, I don't, okay. That's, that does seem to be, well, it was my concern coming in and I've heard several people mention, uh, having alcohol on the premises of the firearms authority seems dangerous. I understand that we put conditions on it, but people are people. And having the two on the same property is a direct mix. We've got alcohol in anybody's car. And so, you know, it's, individuals are, are at liberty to do things that they shouldn't. But to have a business establishment to handle both of those at the same time would put the burden on your business to police it quite heavily.
Right. May I, may I say something? I mean, our idea has nothing to do around renting this place out just for alcoholic event, uh, events without alcohol. That has nothing to do with it. That seems to be the hot part of it. Um, which, and I'm sure there would be some difficult, tough parts with, um, insurance if that's what we were gunning for right off. That's not what we're going for. We're, actually have had members of the community come up and say, hey, I would like to have my 60th, my friend's 60th birthday party here. Can we do that? Uh, can we rent this space out from you? Um, when we looked into it, and I was not part of the original, um, uh, planning and did not know of any of the exceptions as far as I knew, we were always okay to do that and that was the original plan. Um, I did not know about those, but I wasn't in the planning of the original pavilion. We did want to use it for members and appreciation events. And as our events continue to grow and grow, we need more space outdoors to bring in food trucks and things of that nature. And, um, our space is starting to, you know, be a place where the community likes to come and it's mostly centered around our responsible approach to everything we do. Um, so alcohol is not, I, I want to make this very clear. We're not trying to just open up a bar out back. This is not, has nothing to do with what we're trying to do. We are trying to be able to rent a space to somebody who wants to use this space. And then if one of the caterers who has a license and is insured to do so for that catering and is one of the approved caterers of that space would be separate 100% from Ann Arbor Arms, would be employed separately, would be its own website, would have its own staffing, would not have anything to do with Ann Arbor Arms as a store, as a business, would be completely separate in the fact that if we rent this out, it would have nothing to do with our customers unless they wrote it and they would have to sign waivers and guarantee if they were going to have alcohol.
First question.
Go ahead.
It would be logical for me to believe that the person who's renting this space for a party from you and ordering alcohol from elsewhere would also be inclined to go to the shooting gallery. Would that be kind of reasonable, uh, statement?
I would think at the beginning that they would be, they would have known and learned about the place from frequenting our store. So, yeah.
So this, given, I mean, why would anybody have a party at your place if not, if they don't want to shoot at the gallery? I would, if they want to do bowling, they go to bowling alley and have beer. If they come to a shooting gallery, they have, they shoot and they can drink beer if they, whatever they do. So it would be very reasonable for me to believe that if they were to come to your place, rent this place, get food from a third-party caterer like you just described, it would also take a few shots at the, in the gallery.
So any of those.
For the alcohol, have the alcohol, with the alcohol, without the alcohol, I don't know.
So any of those parties that currently come in and rent time from us, much like bachelor parties and, uh, but it's, it's a very popular spot for bachelor parties, ladies' night, where women come in and get to take part, um, in learning how to shoot safely and then going up and having dinner. Um, all of those events and anyone that comes into us are not allowed to bring their own firearms for them. They have to rent them from us, from our RSOs. And so that, basically, it sort of protects them to be able to go on their way and continue about the rest of their bachelor party evening without having firearms or ammunition on them. That it's completely rented from us.
That's not what I'm saying. That's not what I said. What I said was, somebody near premises has a party, gets the beer from elsewhere. Obviously, he or she will also take a few shots before the beer, after the beer, during the beer. That's all I'm saying. Where, where they come from or where they're going is not so material. Right now, they're there at your facility, period. They're getting catering done from outside like we discussed before. And you have shooting facilities, right? So, my, my, so my question was really this, we went off, off the radio here. Are you going to prohibit anybody who comes to these parties with the catering, beer, from going to the gallery? That is the question.
I, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry.
That is my question. We went off the radio here with all those, uh, bachelor parties. That's not the point. The point is, somebody comes to your party, it's almost 100% reasonable for me to believe that they will also go and shoot after a couple of beers. Their milk's over, but they will go and shoot it. I mean, it's, why else am I here at Ann Arbor Arms? I want to know that. Why, why in the world would I have a party there? It's not exactly, yeah, I mean, that's to me logical. So would you have a rule in place that says, no, you can't? That's all. And I'm not looking for answers, but I just raised the point.
Very well, very well. Sorry, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I think people wouldn't shoot between beers.
Um, I can see your concern there and obviously it would be up to us to prove that we wouldn't.
Just like I would do bowling with beers, even if I can't bowl. Um, after a few beers, but I would be inclined to bowl. So, I would be inclined to take a few shoots. Anyway, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So, I have a question. Is there any alcohol with your events currently inside?
No.
None.
That's good, because you were talking about bachelor, bachelor parties.
Oh, they'll start off their day at our place. It's sort of asked what the activity they go to. Um, we have, we have done a few, uh, bullets and brews things where we've had, um, people come in and cater food in. And, uh, you partner with a local sort of farm-to-table restaurant who come in and will cut, will expose people to firearms in the right way to handle and safely shoot. And then they leave there, go up. We make sure there's no firearms in the banquet room. Then they get to try a couple different meats or a couple different dishes, a couple different brews, and then off they go on their way without firearms. Uh, and it's been extremely popular. A few times we did it, then COVID happened, we kind of stopped doing it. So.
Yeah, so.
The answer to your question.
Yes.
It said no, and then.
No alcohol with food.
The description afterwards said yes.
No, he, he's saying right now, the events that they've had, there's no alcohol involved, only food.
Eh, eh, no firearms after they had alcohol.
No firearms after they had the bullets and brews event that we did have. They tried, I think it was, they were allowed to try a ounce of three different beers.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I misunderstood. Good.
No, then this was after.
It was after the, um... So, eh, eh, so this is a question going back. Okay. If, and I don't want to say this, but if it's accessory and they're doing these rentals now and they have their banquet room and they rent their banquet room out, how is this different than that? I know, I didn't want to answer that.
We didn't approve it. We didn't approve banquets and, you know, when they came in one of the buildings.
Well, except they had.
The owners, when they came in one of the, well, the arms, they didn't talk about banquets and.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I wasn't here when it was approved, but.
I wasn't here. I was here in banquet room.
But that was, that was under previous ownership.
I'm sorry, but, you know, it's just, what's that? I'm sorry?
That was under previous ownership also.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, this was banquet and the reason they're in front of us is for rezoning to C4.
Yep.
To allow the rental.
Of a, an accessory structure.
The rental of a patio. To include others, to include restaurant and alcohol consumption. That's what they're asking.
Yes.
But the conditional use could restrict the alcohol.
But we can't put that on them. They would, no, but we can in the next step.
At the next stage, to make this more complicated, at the next stage of review, we do have the ability to place conditions upon that they don't agree.
Or when they come back to discuss the conditions.
Yes.
But once we approve the C4, that's it, that's a, that's a done deal.
The zoning is a done deal in the.
And they could say, well, we don't want to come back and deal with conditional.
They would have it.
It, it's required. It's a required second step.
Okay, it's all, it's just part of the same process. Okay.
The conditional C4 approval.
Okay.
Even if we intend to restrict it more in the
use code, what is the next step called? Uh, just conditional use. Conditional use. Especially in use. We can put more conditions on it in the conditional use than they impose on themselves.
With the conditional zoning.
Because in the conditional use stage of review, we are getting into the actual specifics of the use. I know we're talking a lot about the use and that's fine.
Yes.
But really all we're talking about here is the zoning map will, if approved, the zoning map would change from I one to C four. And allow these uses to go forward. Doesn't allow the uses, it just allows them to present them to us. So there's a whole nother step, another component hearing.
So I get the compartmental, compartmentalizing of this, but the issue is the same, whether we discuss it today or we discuss it later. And I think it's, it's, for me, it's the same because I may not want to, as I've stated earlier, because I know where we're going with it, I don't, would not want to vote it for the change to C four, knowing that we're going to come back here and talk about, you know, the other stuff. So, I mean.
I would just ask if you wouldn't mind me interrupting.
Sure.
That um, you know, the zoning of this, in my opinion, as somebody who's not a hundred percent directly involved with um, booking those things, whether they're members events or whatever, um, I would just ask that they be able to come and argue that and make those deals with you guys directly as opposed to what they're allowed to rent out um and what those conditions are. Because to me, that's totally two separate things. Uh, being able to rent a space and being able to cater in food or alcohol. Uh, that's sort of a different sort of approval that I would like them to be able to provide you the data. Uh, it's the checks and balances that they've already gone through and researched and studied from all the places around the country that they're copying and being able to do and finding out what to do, what's best practice and what to stay completely away from. I would just, you know, request that, you know, they be here to be able to argue those things that you guys are concerned with.
Yeah, I mean, I'm totally, I'm, I'm blown away to know that you have these banquets where we're mixing.
Well, and let's be honest, this has happened once and that was under previous ownership. I happen to have been there since the, since we've started. So I've worked under both ownerships. Um, there's always the same owners, but there's been a sort of live-in owner, partner, and now Greg and T are actually the ones that are on spy and uh, Bill and Holly have retired. So.
Okay, that's why.
It's under new leadership.
Okay, I have, I have, I have the same concerns that are voiced here of moving forward, knowing that we're going to run into the same issue in the next stage. Um, but I didn't realize when I read the paperwork. Yeah. I'm going to put it in a different way. I'm going to, I'm going to reframe this. I didn't see this when I read this, but I think we're now looking at is, like the question, is this an area of the township where we would like to have party events on the outside and all the things that that encompasses? Um, it may be that this is an ideal spot for it, but I don't think the public understood that because I didn't understand that. So we're looking at a party barn, putting it in the worst way I can for the public in this area of the township. And it's, it's isolated quite a bit. So this might be an ideal spot, but we should have that discussion.
Well, there'll also be a public hearing for the conditional use. So just so, yeah, we have the process, right?
That's what we're wanting to talk about in the next.
So I mean, I guess you could do the rezoning and say, okay, the, and not come to any kind of a, you know, the the, the conditions don't, I mean, you could put a condition on it, no alcohol, or would that not be inappropriate?
You could, or no loud music or no.
No amplified music or whatever.
That's what we would want to do because I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's the stage of review technically that.
With a C four.
In the next.
With a C four on page two of your memo, they could standard restaurants that serve alcohol.
Yeah.
Without a conditional use, this is just the C four rezoning. If you look at the.
So they could, they could sell their building and it could become a restaurant that serves alcohol. They could not serve alcohol without going through the conditional use process.
If they continue this process like it, that is one of the conditional use of, it's standard restaurants that serve alcohol. That's under conditional uses. The permitted uses are the things on top.
Yeah, so you know, I guess my, what I'm thinking is, is that that alone, just the, just the rezoning, they could have, they could put a little tent up or whatever. And, and just by virtue of a C four designation, they could
That's pretty sure.
Be a restaurant, put some, some, some food out there.
Okay, well, that's a good point. So, so it's, it's, could they create a living room, a restaurant if we gave them C four?
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second.
So page two of your, your memo, the top.
You can do standard restaurants under their current zoning.
So the special.
Under C four.
Under I one.
I one, they can do regular restaurants.
Under their current I one zoning, current I one zoning, that they're zoned allows standard restaurants that we allow alcohol in a standard restaurant.
But you have to have a liquor license.
Okay, I'm just, but that's not even the question. She.
Yeah.
She was asking if we rezone it, does that promote a restaurant with alcohol? They can do that now under their current zone. Current zoning, I want to allow standard restaurants as a condition. So that doesn't change.
Yeah. But where the snag comes in, you can't be, you can't serve alcohol as a restaurant without a liquor license. And so a liquor license would have to be granted by the township, right?
Yeah, that's one.
To the.
Right.
The issue is with rentals, when you have the catering, that's where, you know, you kind of get around that.
You don't have to have a liquor license.
The liquor, the caterer does.
The caterer has to have the license, I see.
I.
You said standard restaurant, but that doesn't allow the rental of the facility to an outside caterer? Or can you do that catering in I four? You said it allows a standard restaurant.
I think you can, I think you can.
As, as we understood it, as I understand it currently, uh, we are allowed to rent the space out as it is, as long as it goes through Ann Arbor Arms. But we wanted to separate it and make it completely separate from Ann Arbor Arms to avoid any sort of.
I have a statement from Greg Rose that says that this space was not.
No, we're not. No, we're not going to rent it out, but under currently, but as I've heard it, you could, if we sold one of our customers a time, as the research that we've been looking into in the last like three weeks getting ready for this, that if everything is ran through Ann Arbor Arms, we are zoned to quote, to do everything as an item from Ann Arbor Arms. So we want, if we're going to rent this out, we want it to be completely separate from Ann Arbor Arms.
When, when you say, I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
I just, I don't agree with that. I, the real reason you guys are in front of us is because you want to rent it out. This, the, the reason that we allowed it as a necessary use is because it was supposed to be for customer appreciation and and, and, and employee, employee lounge, period. And as soon as we were made aware that there is a website and there was this idea of renting it in any way, shape or form, that's why you're in front of us. And that's fine. You, you're going, you now are going through the proper steps. That's why you're here. But to try to see if that's possible, but um, it's you know, I've got a letter from the owner, the current owner, that indicates that this was not going to be rented space.
No, initially, I don't believe it was supposed to be just something for overflow outdoor effects. You're right. And that, what I'm saying is, as we started uh, looking into that, we started doing research. As we started having people come up and ask us if they could rent it.
It's, okay, I want to separate two things. I want to separate two things. Do people have an issue with renting the space out separate from the alcohol? Or is it the alcohol issue that is the reason to object to the renting of the space? I mean, if, if they came and said, you know, the next step, conditional use, you know, we don't have any intention of, you know, eh, then it would be, you know, they, they, so that's, you get my question, right?
Can I ask you a question to clarify what you're asking?
Yeah.
Are you saying rent the space, you're talking about the outdoor space?
Okay.
You're saying that people would come and not drink alcohol? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
She's asking if that's.
If the, if it's the, is it the rental of the space that we're concerned about? Or is it the rental of the space with alcohol that we're concerned about?
Good question, good question.
Okay, oh, good.
Yeah, and what I was going to say, what I did say earlier was, I came in here with alcohol as being an issue at Ann Arbor Firearms on their property. But what I'm now realizing is the public probably looked at it that way and maybe this would be a different issue for, in their eyes, as to whether we want outdoor events to be hosted that isn't associated with Ann Arbor Arms. Um, and, and all the ramifications of outdoor partying spaces. So there are two issues, one of which I was concerned about. I, there are others very concerned and the public. But are there, my question is, have we really thought about the other? Do, are we ready to act and allow open rental not through with, I mean, it's not by Ann Arbor Arms, it's, it's a catered house. I don't know.
But I don't know how to escape responsibility or management of the rental. I mean.
So it's both. What were you saying?
I'm just saying on the Ann Arbor Arms property. Where there are guns.
And all the issues there.
I, I had no idea that these banquets were happening with sips of beer. And, you know, I mean, I get the precautions. You, they, you can't use your own gun. You got to use the, and there was a turn back in, you sip on the beer or, or whatever, but it feels um like playing with fire. And, and I, I'm a gun owner and I believe in gun ownership and, you know. And then you add in the CPL um aspect, um, you couldn't control that. You couldn't control what a CPL person could walk out and have some drinks or whatever. You know, I don't even think you could control that in your, in your, in your, I mean, I could walk in with my pistol with my CPL. You can't stop me from walking in your store. Or taking part in, you know, I mean, right now, that's why it's so, it's, it's.
Rules of CPL are completely separate from, you know, us.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't hear anyone here saying, yeah, with alcohol. I mean, I, I sort of see that as being off the table. So the, and that can, we're good that that could be a restriction with conditional use. Or does that have to be, do we have to eliminate restaurants serving alcohol from the C four?
Um, for this property? Yeah, I think you could make that condition um, you know, and all conditions you make for conditional land use have to do, have to be related to the standards of conditional land use. Seven conditional land use standards. And a lot of them have to do with how will the use affect property and this room and the township engine. So if there was some condition that you believe would make situations safer, it would seem that reduce impacts to the property and adjacent neighbors seem to me that you could make that condition. Um, that might be the question in town attorney.
I mean, you could go in and buy bullets. I mean, because I understand it, Mr. Lane, when first was presenting to us tonight, he said, um, customers who were using the rental would use the facilities in, inside the store. Bathroom facilities. So there's a going in and out.
I don't believe for, if we were to get rezoned and get through the conditional rezoning where we were allowed to, I don't think we would even want anybody coming in, period. I think we would look at um Porter Johnson. Um, if that's the right term for that, because the last thing I want is for people coming in and having to sit there and watch a camera because no, I don't want anyone coming in who's out there consuming alcohol. Absolutely not. Um.
Do you think that you could still, are you, would you still be interested in having this event space without alcohol?
Yes, absolutely. To me, it's all caught up on the alcohol portion of it. And I don't, I don't understa, I, I get the hot topic when you mentioned guns, firearms, alcohol in it. You're like, oh, same property. I completely get your guys' reservations. What I ask is that we get through this step and let that be one of your conditional um, things that you up basically enforce on us. Um, but let it be to T, the general manager, who has spent time um researching this and uh, put that on her and, you know, to me, I still want, would love to be able to go up to one of our members who wants to come in and have his uh, brother's sixtieth birthday party there and cater in beef brisket and um, have a cigar there and that be as wild as it gets. Maybe they have soda pop. But that's, I mean, to me, I still see that being a great community hangout space. Uh, especially since our area is starting to kind of go in that direction, even if Pickable does decide to become, I know it's, planning phases are beginning, but a lot of those people would like to have an outdoor communal area after they get done playing around with one of their buddies, have a sit down. Um.
Yes, I, I really like the thing. However, I, since it's already been put in black and white with alcohol in the application, I have, I would have a hard time approving it, knowing that we're going to disapprove it at the next step. I would, I would, I would rather table it and have it be resubmitted with the language that we're talking about.
You know, it's just going to move to table.
Rather than reject it? I mean, that's the other argument. I, I couldn't, I can't.
I mean, if we table it, can they come back and amend it? Or does it, they could?
Yeah, they could.
And that would give you.
You said you want to come and speak.
Yeah, I would, I would. I mean, I know our intentions, um, and I understand your concerns and let's, let's, let's address those and come to a, you know, amicable solution where we can all feel comfortable.
I would just say if you, if you were motion to table, it, it, it should say, you know, so they have, can, can fine tune the conditions that they're placing upon themselves. So you don't want to say anything specific because we can't do that at this part. But just say, based on the comments and planning missions that they have can, have not three to five to their conditions that they are presenting to us.
Move, move to table this project, allow the applicant to uh think more about the conditions that they're going to place on themselves. Um, and, you know, I, I mean, I, I have concerns about alcohol being in the store. I don't even know how that's happening, but, okay.
In our store? That's not happening.
Oh, that's not happening.
I, what I was trying to be very clear is a few years ago, under previous ownership, we did have one event.
Oh, I see.
Ran into COVID and that never happened again.
All right, so, uh, the, and the motion is to table ordinance amendment number twenty-two zero zero four Ann Arbor Arms for conditional rezoning from a uh, I one limited industrial to C four, positive. for conditional rezoning from a I-1 limited industrial just C4, positive commercial, to allow the applicant to respond to the comments discussed tonight by the planning commission and review their, what would it, what it would be.
Self-imposed conditions.
Self-imposed conditions, okay.
All of you on the bat, Jan.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. Is there a support? Okay, support from Commissioner Hyde? Is any further discussion? All votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That, so the motion to table passes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your work.
All right.
Five minute break or two minute break?
Two minutes, two minute break.
Amen.
Time for Doug to take what he needs.
Are you guys all set?
Yeah, we are, we just have a couple other agenda items that we need to do, so.
Recording stopped.
What's that? We have. It's like rushing the agenda.
All right, we're unmuted, video is going, and I'll come, number three, two, one.
Recording in progress.
All right, we're back on unfinished business. The PUD FSP number 19010 Parkland Plaza Senior Living Site Plan Extension Request. And if the advocate wants to say anything, and then we can see if Doug wants to highlight.
Yeah, we just submitted an application request to extend our site plan. If you know, we extended it, extended it last year as well for a year. The client's asking for a six-month extension at this point. They feel like they're really close to getting their general contractor lined up. Construction pricing has come down enough to where they're, you know, obviously they're approved for a budget and all these price increases have really stretched that budget. So they've been working to do some cost ops, mizing, fifth project done on budget. They feel like they're really close to that now. And with the six-month extension, they'll be back with the final zoning compliance and payment of fees to get the project probably under construction here in the early spring. So that's where we are at this time, and so we're here to ask for that six-month extension.
And do you have any comments?
No, I think this is your second exten, this isn't, this isn't, I think this is the third extension.
This is the third extension? It might be, yeah, or, yeah, like, sure, I'm here.
So, it, there, you know, there gets to be a point that, maybe this isn't, especially if you're only asking for six months, but you know, there does get to be a point that we start to get concerned about ordinances changing and things like that. Now, I will say, there have been no ordinances that have changed that would have impacted this project. So, there's no new, you know, no new setbacks, no new density, no new tree, your tree ordinances and that for future ordinances, so if, if the project came in the way it came in previously, it's very, I don't, I don't know why it wouldn't be approved. That being said, I mean, I'm fairly certain this is their third extension request, and there gets to be a point that, you know, you know, why, you know, what is the problem? Why are we go, why, this is two and a half years now since this thing's been approved? What, what's going on? So, I, you know, it's up to you guys, and ultimately the township board has to approve the extension, but, you know, I guess I'm okay as your planner for six more months, but it gets to, you know, it gets to be a point where we just gotta pull the plug, it's just not happening, so. At that point, I guess I, I would, I would be okay with six months, but it does get to be a limit to all the extensions that people can grant.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments? I, I just want to say, I understand the craziness that has been going on with the construction industry. This is a pretty high-quality building, it would have had major impacts with materials, pricing and so forth. I do agree that we don't want to keep doing this, so I think, put it in the record that we're hesitant to grant it, but given we haven't experienced what we've experienced in the last two years before in our history, right? So I, I'm inclined to say yes with that hesitancy on the record. I, other commissioners?
I don't have a problem with the extension. I'd just ask a, a small question. Where is Parkland Plaza? Where's this project?
So, Parkland Plaza is your, would, Siobhan View is where they're building and connecting all the way through. It's actually that one lot where the cul-de-sac used to, well, it still is, before you drive into Siobhan View. It's that lot.
Frost Road, Frost Liberty.
No, not on Frost Liberty. It's on Parkland Plaza.
Having some objection.
Yes, you're going from the light.
You have, you have sent it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you, yes, yeah, yep, so, yeah.
And it, it is a nice project, I mean, the, the way it's designed and stuff, and it's a senior living place, so, okay.
Was this part of that whole entire project? Like, this is the last phase of it?
No, this has nothing to do with Siobhan, yeah, no, so, no. There's actually a public parking lot that goes along with this project that they're actually building as well. There's a six-space gravel parking lot with a sign and everything, it's landscaping. That's actually included as part of this project for the township, to have a space to connect to the trails that are there. So.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion, and I.
I don't have a, I don't have a motion for that.
So why don't we just say that we just need to approve the.
Let me, let me take a stand.
Oh, right, you can, you can be creative.
Well, I'm, I'm trainable. I'm not moved that we extend the site plan, the extension for six months based for the PUD FSP number 19010 Parkland Plaza Senior Living.
Support?
We have a motion from Commissioner Moore, support from Commissioner Hyde, any further discussion? We'll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde, yes. Sure, we'll call hers.
Yes.
Thank you very much. You guys have a nice night.
Sorry you didn't wait.
Oh, that's okay.
You should, this is something we should be mindful, we should have moved that up.
Yeah, yeah.
But you have to clean because it's in a different area.
Well, we, we can monkey with the.
I would, the chair entertain a motion to suspend the, the committee reports tonight and go right to the PUD language discussion.
I would entertain that motion.
Second.
Okay, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we will, not to be opposed. The PUD language discussion, I think, I really would like everyone around for this, but I think it's good that we have it out. And one, there are just, there are, I think, two things, key things that we wanted to draw people's attention to. One was the discussion of making the PUD only available in the sewer and water district. And I think that's something to think about, and I think we, we probably need to spend like a chunk of time on this to really talk about it. And then within the PUD ordinance itself, looking at increasing the incentives and the options of the incentives, and.
What does that mean, increase?
So the incentives are what allows you to increase density. And, and, and so.
True.
And it, and the open, yeah, the open space, and then also, what are the incentives? So what we're, we're upping the ante a little bit with the incentives, as well as increasing the, and whether we want to increase height and density. And, and Doug would, you know, is putting together a little map of possible impacts, because we still have the open space clustering in the other zoning districts. So this would be a way of increasing the opportunity for density in the water and sewer district and not allowing the PUDs in the, outside of that district. So, that's a big move, and we really want to, you know, talk about that. So I just want to put that out there, and also, you know, and then the links that I had, you know, helps to visualize the density, what different densities look like, and the one ULI link that I gave, and for people that are still with us, the ULI, those links will be in the minutes. And I, I'd encourage, you know, folks to take a look at those too. The ULI, the reason why I wanted people to look at it, it was, it's a way that, I think Pittsfield is using that guideline in, in how they're treating Celine Ann Arbor Road. And it's, it's a way of creating more of a pedestrian-friendly mixed-use piece. And I'm wondering if it, and I'd like your feedback on it too, a strategy for Jackson Road corridor. Because right now, it's, you know, pretty much a commercial-industrial strip.
And we give lit service to mixed-use.
Right, right, so, you know, could, are there ways that we can use the PUD to really strengthen that? So anyway, that's being, in a nutshell. Anything else that you wanted to point out in the PUD stuff?
I don't think so.
And, okay. Okay, we're, so, we're, we'll bring that back, and hopefully, I know, I think the next meeting we have, we're gonna have quite a few things probably, but we can always do a working session or something on.
Yeah, I was wondering if, if the next time we do with the PUD ordinance, we make sure it's a time where we don't have things on our agenda.
Agenda or a working session?
Yeah, sometime in the past, if we had an item like this, we might meet at like six o'clock and have just, and just do, you know, do an hour, a good solid hour and just this. Or, you know, so we could have a working session that starts at six, still a public meeting. But, you know, it's just a, really just a working session.
Yeah, I, I actually would love to do that. I, I would really like to do that. Okay, we'll, we'll take that as under advisement, okay. The minutes, we have two sets of minutes, one is no meeting. And the other one is the 6:13 minutes. And so I wanted to ask if, we can, if there are any revisions to either of those minutes, and we'll do it in one motion. I did not have any revisions.
Motion.
Okay, so may I have a motion to accept the minutes of 6:13 2022 and 6:27 2022?
6:13 22, and what was the other one?
Uh, was 6:27 22.
Where there was no meeting.
Where there was no meeting.
We have to.
We still have that.
I would move.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hyde, support. By Commissioner Sharma, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I will, I mean, does anyone have any specific announcements? I, I just want to remind people, both the open space survey and the environmental task force survey. And the QR code for both those surveys were, were the same in the newsletter. So for the environmental task force survey, please use the website link. They have, or the QR code on the website. There was an oops in the newsletter. That's my only announcement.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Moore, support by Commissioner Sharma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 11:14.
Recording stopped.